Consider creating a millage or adopting a fee for capital projects and public safety, for example, fire and EMS. With a county council mandate to cut recurring county operation, county government operating costs and reduce county government reliance on unassigned fund balance to produce a balanced budget, Fairfield County's administration is presenting for your review, analysis and consideration two options for proposed fiscal year 2023 budget cuts that reduce the deficit. We acknowledge the economic realities of higher gas prices, retirement costs and insurance costs. These costs are necessary and we will continue to analyze processes and practices that will increase cost saving to the county. We also acknowledge higher costs in some necessary supplies that make challenging budgetary and make this challenging budgetary environment even more difficult. With that, we have recommended cuts to get closer to the anticipated revenues. We also studied the history of last year's budget development process to understand the context for this year's process. In studying the record, we confirmed several things. For several years, county expenses have exceeded revenues. For several years, Fairfield County is a community that despite stagnant revenues has continued to grow the size of its local government. For example, Fairfield County is a community of 21,000 that has 308 full-time employees. Based on Fairfield's population, a local government with that many full-time employees is an outlier in South Carolina, according to the South Carolina Associations of Counties. And also, according to the last census, Fairfield County lost 12% of its population. To present a balanced budget, Fairfield County has depended heavily on unassigned fund balance without executing revenue development plans. And then historically, little has been done to increase revenue sources to finance the government budget, making the needed but very difficult cuts in expenditures inevitable and necessary. We believe that we are responsibly moving in the right direction. This situation was created over many years and we will not correct it overnight and will not be corrected overnight. Fairfield County's anticipated revenues to finance county operations for the upcoming fiscal year is $33,787,551. County anticipated expenditures are estimated at $35,98,701. The county identified capital needs of $5,825,393. The original operating expenses submitted to county administrators, county administration exceeded revenues by $2.9 million, almost $3 million. County administration and finance cut these original requests to $1,732,318 over expected revenue, which is presented in your budget book, option one, budget book, section two. So that's the book that you have. The re- this recommendation acknowledges the following reasons for this year's growth in expenditures. People's health insurance increased by $368,512. Retirement rates increased by $174,706. Fuel costs are on an average 25% higher than last year. Supply costs, in particular medical supply costs, has increased as high as 30% more, according to some vendors. And then, agency allocations are set to last year's levels, fiscal year 2022. Simply put, it's it's cost more to run county government than it did a year ago. After careful consideration of the history of prese- previous budget developments and understanding the context of this year's needs, I'm presenting an additional option for council's consideration, that's option two. Option two involves a 10% across the board cut from non-essential accounts. This would result in an additional $562,554.52 in savings, though the requested expenses would still exceed anticipated revenue by $1,169,763. We cannot responsibly recommend further cuts from essential accounts such as utilities and leases. We're also recommending the use of anticipated excess funds from current capital projects and the second allotment of the American Recovery Act funding to address some capital needs. That's budget book, section four. The work needed to get a balanced budget is going to be challenging and will require the work of county council, administration and department directors. The two options available, accepting the original administrator's recommended budget or taking a 10% cut to non-essential accounts. We are recommending council consider other options such as increasing the county millage by this year's CPI percentage of 4.70%. Dedicate and assign millage for capital projects. Consider developing and assign millage or fee for public safety, fire, EMS, and continue to support economic development projects which bring additional revenue to the county. Thank you. I would like to, before you wanted to say something?
I'm Tim Whitaker.
Before that, I wanted to turn it over to Deputy Director Williams and Ms. Bass for any additional comments they have.
Okay.
Need a microphone.
Not much additional comments. I do want to also reiterate the thanks to the directors for working with us. When we went back to them after we saw the original submittal, there were many who did come back and offered to make additional cuts to try to help get to the point that, to get closer to the anticipated revenues. We do realize that this is a challenging budget. It'd be challenging to get out of this situation. It's not something that we'll be able to quickly do overnight. The reason why we put in there the potential recommendation of looking at the Consumer Price Index increase is that recently came out from the Association of Counties and then just seeing the fact that the Association of Counties is even looking at bringing out a CPI at 4%, 4.70%, kind of reiterates the fact that inflation has been happening. You're seeing this increase in the cost of living across all sectors. So it's not just hitting us, it's hitting our employees, it's hitting our citizens as well. And we do realize that makes it even more challenging to identify different revenue streams as we go forward. That is also why we try to identify ways to address some of our capital needs in section four of your budget book, to look at the second allotment of ARPA funding, to look at excess revenue that we may have from other projects that are coming in under budget. And if they continue to be under budget, we might be able to address some capital needs. But then looking at a long-range plan of how we'll look at what's coming down next year and the year after, so that we can come up with a good plan of ways we can address ongoing capital needs. And we'll continue, we may not have all the answers at the end of this cycle, but what we will dedicate ourselves to over the next year is to continue to look at all the options to address the different capital needs that we can bring back to you so that we can make good decisions, good financial decisions for the county.
Ms. Williams?
Yes. You don't want to let Ms. Bass finish first?
Yeah, that's fine, go ahead.
Okay.
I think they've both said it very well. They don't leave much left to say, but I do think the Consumer Price Index coming out that high, in in the time I've been here, I've never seen it that high. And I think that is a very strong indicator of, you know, inflation and what we need to expect, the cost of business, you know, is going up. And I think that is a very strong indicator of that. And it being that high is a very real indicator of what a big challenge it is.
Mr. Pauli?
Yeah. Ms. Williams, do you want to maybe put on the record the reason we're not streaming budget feeding via YouTube live stream?
I was actually not aware that we were not live streaming this meeting. I I was not aware of that. I can go and check to see what may be going on with that.
Okay.
Oh. Oh, okay. Okay, yeah, I didn't know.
My apologies, they're having technical difficulties with streaming, but they are recording, so we can't get it posted later as well.
I guess before we get started, I guess there are several things, Mr. Whitaker. One of them is, I do want to, I do want to thank all of you. I know this has been difficult and challenging trying to put this budget together. So again, I want to thank all of you for all the work you you've done. And thank you for putting this this page in as concerning the ARPA funds. However, as we go through this, I don't believe that we can use this as part of the budget process. It's just in here for information, because I don't think you can tangle federal monies and other monies in there together. So, but it's good that we got it in here so we can begin to look at it and let everyone see the anticipated, how this can, how we can use ARPA money to help us with some of the capital expenses that that we're going to have. So again, thank you for doing that piece. And then if you could, it would be better if it was outside this process anyway. One of the things you point out is that with the 10% cut, as you described it, is we would still have $1,169,763 coming out of the unassigned fund balance. Now, knowing that, knowing all the work that you've done, and this budget as as we're talking about does not ask or request a tax increase, a millage increase.
No.
Okay. So now, one of the things that, as we sort of look at this for council is, you know, because we have, I think, about $414,000, Ms. Bass, on the, I guess, from, from the sale of the hospital property.
I get, you're talking about?
You know, we took $1 million for the, we took $1 million out for the Fairfield County complex, you know, add all this stuff, and then left by $414,000, I think it is, $400 sometimes.
Yeah.
And then we have 1.9 million from Dominion that we got in cash. Okay. So then, so if we would adopt the 10% reduction, so the money coming from that would be, we could use, we would not have to go into the fund balance that we already had, although it's very limited. We could use the money from the Dominion's cash piece and also that $414,000 to pay to pay for this. Am I correct, Ms. Bass?
Yes, sir. How that works is at the end of the fiscal year, June 30th of 2022, to the extent that our revenues exceed our expenditures and that year closes, that amount rolls into unassigned fund balance. So to the extent of these, you know, two items you've mentioned, would technically roll into fund balance. So whatever fund balance we use as budgetary fund balance for this year, it will still be called budgetary fund balance, but yes, we can not budget to exceed these amounts.
Okay, and just a follow-up question too, and thank you. So then, with this budget that we are currently in, we had, we used 1.4 million from unassigned fund balance last time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, but we don't think we're going to use that this time, correct?
No, when looking at interim reports, I don't believe we'll.
Okay. All right, so again, you know, looking at this, looking at.
May I ask a question to follow up on what you?
Yes, sir.
What, where do we stand year-to-date as far as this budget is percentage-wise? If you can give us some kind of a?
I don't, I don't have it off the top of my head. When we've looked at it, I haven't looked at it today, and I mean, as y'all know, every time we cut a check batch, every time the Treasurer's Office posts as a receipt, it changes. But as we've looked at it, you know, throughout the year and particularly recently, it appears we're in a much more favorable position.
Okay. And one of the things we did, council, all of us did together, we had a pre-budget meeting to make sure that everyone understood how much money we was getting from revenues. So I think the, you all understood that, we understood it, I think the department heads and everything, we all, we all understood that going into it. But as you, and Mr. Whitaker, what you, what you, what you're telling us though is, is that everything that you've done, you and your staff, we still at the $1,169,000 that we're going to have to sort of eat, because if your thinking is, if we take any additional cuts, it's going to be devastating to the organization.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Bell?
Yes, sir.
That includes all capital requests and everything?
No, sir, that only have, if you look at in your book, and I don't want to take their job, but if you look at the book that they've prepared for you, in here, and I'm trying to see what page it is on, one of the things they did is, and I'm trying to find it.
I just wanted to make sure we had an understanding.
There's no capital in here, but one of the things they did is, is we looked at that, that's why there's probably got to be another process, and we can get that on the agenda next time. But as you look at the capital process, is how we take this ARP monies and be able to try to fund some of the capital it's been, so it don't hit the county so hard. Now, as you know, we got, it's by one point, trying to see this, Ms. Williams, I think it's 1.5 for the courthouse. Okay, and the other money, you know, we had planned to be able to do more with the other ARP money, because we had talked about that, Ms. Bass, I see Mr. Call over there too, we had talked about how we could maybe buy a share of cars, some ambulance and stuff with that, but you know, that went another direction, so we don't have that. But what we do have, if this money here that's set aside, that we possibly, if council supported, we can use to, and in here is ambulance, the courthouse, because we got it, that's a debt, and we got a couple sheriff's cars in there, and we got some air packs and the ARP money that will help us stabilize the budget somewhat. There's another question I have, Mr. Whitaker, is, we continue to get complaints, all of us, I can't say all of us, but for the most council people I talk to, is about the Monday that we have the recycling center closed. So we need to figure out a way where we can open that recycle center. Again, this Moses Bell is one council member talking, okay? And we have all, all of us have a right to bring up anything that you all may have. But we need to find a way to be able to get that recycling center at least open on Monday. If we have to keep it closed on Wednesday, we need to give a day back to our citizens because they are complaining and we getting calls almost weekly in trying to do so. But again, I want to thank you for your work that you've done. There's another question I have, but I'll let somebody ask, if you all got any questions, I got, I got another one.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Just taking a look at the 2022 budget, how many unfilled positions do we have?
At any given time?
You mean at any given time, or?
Yes.
We average around 300 filled. I'm looking for my chart here. I want to say we're close to around 340 to 350 spots.
Okay, 40 to 50.
That's a high number. Yes, ma'am.
What, what if we cut back on some of the won't projects rather than some of the need projects?
Okay, when you say won't projects, what are they?
Well, like the mini parks and things like that, you know, postponing them to later on, doing them after we get our budget back.
Mr. Gilbert, I appreciate your question, but as you notice, and you've been, you've been here, one of the things is, is the mini parks, all of those things was not taken out of any, any county budget. It was taken out of ARP monies. And those, and those were recommended for, like, what do you call, outdoor spaces and all those kinds of things.
Yeah, but I'm saying, whether it come out ARP or not, that's money that the county can use to help fund the, you know, the budget.
That money's already been allocated, Mr. Gilbert. What you got to look at is what's here in this, in this allocation of ARP monies.
Take, Mr. Bell, taking a look at some of the budget information that we received, have we looked at any unified phone carriers, cell phone carriers and all of those kinds of things?
Good question.
We do currently use one carrier pretty much across the board unless there is a specific need. For example, some of our fire stations may be in an area that a particular carrier doesn't pick up well, and, and we would use that. And then, Mr. Pope is looking into a program that, a carrier that is specifically designed for like emergency services. But, but otherwise, we, we try to keep all that kind of uniform where we can get the best deal.
I think for me, the general question is efficiency. Where do we find, like, it's going to take time for us to analyze processes, contracts, everything to understand if and where there are any opportunities to create more efficiency.
But we did look into that, you know, are we, are we getting the best deal?
Right.
We just don't, oh, I'm sorry, are we getting, are we getting the best deal? And that's going to take time and analysis and bringing together teams of folks to see, you know, how do we contract? How do we analyze what's the best deal for the county? So that is one of the processes that we look, we will engage in moving forward.
Mr. Bell?
Yes, sir.
I know we all have questions of Ms. Bass and Mr. Carter and Mr. Whitaker, but I mean, I do see the department heads here, and if they here, I think we need to get to them and let them present their departments, because a lot of these questions, they're sitting here, hearing us question each other, I mean, they don't have to sit here for that.
Okay, I'm okay with that, but one of the things, in talking to Mr. Whitaker earlier this afternoon, the question I have is, is there anything, you can have them come up and talk about their needs, but is there anything in the budget? Of their requests, are they asking for something other than what you're presenting? I know they might be asking for a lot of things, but based on what you just shared with us, even with a 10% cut, we still over, still $1 million in unassigned fund balance.
Yeah, and.
So, but if you, if you want to bring them, and Mr. Pauli got a point.
Mr. Pauli, what, what, I do think their voice is important, and so that's why, thank you all for coming, and if folks want to, our plan was to, you know, present the document for you to ask any questions of departments that you wanted to, but if, you know, I don't have any opposition to that. I do want it, Ms. Williams, to kind of explain the 10%, because it sounds like it's just a 10%, but there was some, some very critical thinking that went into the analysis and what we could do with the 10%. Wow, it's cutting the 10%, it's not a 10% across-the-board cut, so we need some more assessment of, we need to explain that more. And then, you know, I would encourage any department head that wants to speak directly to council.
Again, Ms. Williams, you says, you need Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Okay.
So the, the 10%, what we, what we did was, we got the original department requests and we kind of went through that and we met with some departments to talk about their capital needs, to see if we could find other ways to fund some of those capital needs. What we weren't able to do to stay within was to do all of the new personnel recommendations. In some cases, such as in Parks and Rec, we may have added some funding for part-time to try to help with part-time employment, but we did not add any new positions to this current budget. After we met with the different departments, we looked at if we were to do a 10% cut, when we say non-essential, we did not feel as responsible to do across-the-board cut for things like utilities, cable, phone, leases. Those are set costs that if we set a 10% cut on a, on a lease for a building, we know that we're basically just under budgeting if we 10% cut that. So it was all of the accounts that were things related to maybe travel, office supplies, meals, those kind of things, those were the accounts that had the 10% cut that you see in there. So if you look and you see an area where it's like showing there isn't a savings, it's a zero, that was an account that we considered essential because we did not want to intentionally cut a cable account where our cable bill may come out or where our telephone bill will come out. We, we know those costs, so we did not want to do a 10% cut. So it's not quite across the board, that's why we say in some of the, the non-essential functions, but it still may be challenging in some of those areas, and that's why we'll monitor it throughout the year.
I got a, you, you got a question?
Well, I understand all of that, but I would just emphasize that here, we asked them to be here, a lot of things we don't know by looking at the paper. I mean, I would encourage every department to stand up and, and voice their concerns and voice their needs and let us decide what you need for your department.
And I think we do have a certain order, there were some that need to go first, and I'll pass back to Ann.
Let me ask this question before we start then, okay? That's what we, and I really asked this question today is, is that the savings for the refinancing of the, of the bond, when they told us about that saving, they said it was about $333,000. Okay, just so to make sure you're all prepared, and I think we only going to use, you said 220,000. Is that still the case? Because I really think we ought to be able to use more than that.
Yes, sir. So the refinancing on the IPRB bond reduced the payment of that bond by about $333,000 for about the next four years, I think. And then after that, it, it steps on down further to more like the $500,000 mark. Every year, to make the payment on that IPRB bond, the way that structure is set up is we issue a GO bond, a general obligation bond, to the cost of that payment. We make the payment on the IPRB out of the general obligation bond. With an IPRB bond, that is, that is a promise of future revenue, that's what we took in anticipation of the nuclear plant, you know, way back when. The general obligation bond is what we can actually use our debt service millage to pay. We can't pay the IPRB payment with debt service millage because it's not a general obligation bond. That's why that structure is set up like it is to issue a G O bond to pay the I P R B. We assess millage for debt service to pay the general obligation bonds. So our, um, our I P R B bond payment for the fiscal year of two thousand twenty-three is gonna be one million three hundred thirty-two thousand. Our total G O debt, our total general obligation bond debt, debt service for fiscal two thousand twenty-three is one million three hundred seventy-three thousand. Because we've got these bonds that we've issued in the past that we still have to pay on. Each year moving forward, as we issue a new one, we're gonna be issuing it to make a lesser payment. So it will certainly trickle down. Um, when I look at the three-year average, and I, I just went back and looked at the last three fiscal years, um, I have men note right there, the three-year average that we've collected with our existing debt service mill is about a million five sixty. I know we're gonna have G O bond debt payments of a million three seventy-three. We, we've talked about, um, through the course of this, some potential increases with like real estate property because the real estate market, you know, is changing and, and maybe giving us some increases there in some different places. We may see some increases in assessments, but when I look at that average of a million five sixty and, and I know I've got to have at least a million three seventy-three, that's where I come up with a decrease of the two twenty.
And, and, and your thinking, a- after you have reviewed it, um, after our conversation, you still think it ought to be two twenty versus two fifty or two eighty?
Um, I do, I, I, I can look at it again. I, I will certainly look at it again. Um.
Okay.
But I, I do think, I think that's where we are.
Okay, so how do we need to set this up to where department heads can?
Um, yeah, I have, I, I've got two department heads, um, that, you know, with some special considerations. I was gonna, usually we just go in order, but I was gonna let them go ahead. Um, so if, Ms. Lawson, if you want, and we'll use this table and mic here, um, for the department heads.
Can I have one question before we get started?
Sure.
Budget book. Where it says annual budget by organization report, and it's one of two and two of two. And it's got a two thousand and twenty-two adopted budget and then a two thousand and twenty-three county administrator. So is, is this, is this what the county administrator is recommending to council? For the budget to be for each individual department?
That whole line, that whole line is, is, yes, option A is what I'm, what me and the team is recommending, yes.
But if you go to option B, which is a ten percent.
Percent, right.
Um, this, this is not accurate.
Yeah.
Yep, this does not reflect the ten percent.
Okay.
And, yep, I'll just give you all a little explanation of, of what you've got. Um, the worksheet that Mr. Paulie is referring to is two pages, and it gives us the total by department, the dollar amount they're over or under, and the percentage they're over or under for the two thousand twenty-two adopted, the two thousand twenty-three recommended. Um, the, the detail is back behind that. So if, if we wanna start and look at the total, and then if we need to go in the detail, I think that's usually how we do it. Um, in the detail report that is eighty-five pages, Ms. Lawson's department starts on page twenty-one. So since we're a little out of order, that'll, that'll get you all there. Um, and her, the total, the requested, um, as is now is two million one ninety-five. Um, she had very minimal requests of, for increases. One particular is juvenile housing and another is medical, um, services and supplies. Um, and I'll let her explain those, um, and any other, um, items she would like to explain.
Well, in the past, um, the juveniles hadn't cost very much money. They've been kinda in and out. We do have five down at D J J now for murder. They are not getting out of jail. Um, we're already several thousand over budget now because of the low budget that I did get for juvenile funding. Um, school's fixing to be out, so we can expect even more increase with our juveniles. It's fifty dollars a head. If those five stay down there for a year, even with what I asked for, and then going back to Mr. Whitaker and cutting it down after he asked us to cut the budget, it's still going to run you ninety-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, which would throw me fifty thousand, well, forty-eight thousand two hundred and fifty over budget from what I've asked for. I do not see us having a decrease in the juvenile population anytime soon.
Do you have any capital request vehicles?
Um, I did request a vehicle. I, I can hold off. I've got one new vehicle and one that's just kinda suitable for doing, uh, around town. It's, don't work too well, but it's good enough to get around town then. And my other capital request was locks. Um, the locks at the jail are twenty-three years old, even though we did have a substantial upgrade to the jail. But keep in mind, those locks have been used on both sides. They've been used as air locks, then they were flipped and used as electric locks. For ever two locks that breaks down that I have to send to Alabama, it cost around eight hundred and seventy-two dollars per lock to have those fixed. If all those locks or several in a cell would go down at one time, it would be cheaper to spend around a hundred and seventy-five thousand to replace all the locks than to keep paying eight hundred seventy-two per lock. That would be the biggest thing I need now because that would be a security issue.
What was, how much was that? Hundred and what, seventy-five?
Seventy-five thousand. Um, my question is, when I take a look at, um, account five, two, three, eight, is that what you're referring to when you said juvenile hu- housing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and, and I just see a recommendation for thirty-five thousand?
I, I had asked for fifty thousand, but when Mr. Whitaker brought us back in and told us y'all wanted us, I did cut it back down a little bit. I mean, if they pick up some juveniles with lesser charges, then that won't affect the juvenile housing budget as much as if the violence continues. I mean, we've never had five juveniles down for murder at one time and attempted murder, some, some's with attempted murder, and we've got one as young as fourteen years old. So he's gonna be there for a while, and I mean, you're gonna continue to pay for him.
So again, your initial request was for ninety-one thousand?
No, my initial request was for fifty thousand, and I, I did a cutback.
Okay.
What about staffing? Are you short on people?
Yes, sir. I, I did ask for my two positions to be reinstated that the council froze. Um, I did have officer get hurt at the hospital last night because I didn't have additional personnel to do a two-person transport. Um, so the officer was injured last night because it ended up being a, a one-person transport. Sheriff's Department did respond, and I'm grateful for that, but it, by the time they got there, the officer was already hurt.
So you could use two more?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Lawson, thank you for being here.
Okay. Um, before you leave, um, Ms. Lawson, do any other council may have any questions? Okay.
Okay.
All right, um, and next I'm gonna get Ms., let Ms. Diana White, go ahead, sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry, I do have one question. Is there a policy at the detention center that two officers need to accompany a transport?
Yes, sir. Brad had established that back a long time ago when he first come back as H R. But, um, as people dwindle and find cleaner jobs and stuff like that, I mean, you know, it's, it's kinda hard to staff it with the low pay.
Thank you.
Uh, may I just ask another question? Have two frozen positions, um, do you have any vacant positions at all?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Um, and I do have a copy, um. This is, um, the newest staffing analysis, um. Uh. This is my newest, um, staffing analysis. Uh, Robert Benfield and Blake Taylor, um, just recently did that. But Mr. Benfield will be having surgery, um, in the morning. So he was supposed to be meeting with myself and Mr. Whitaker and Ms. Williams, but that will get delayed before he brings that before council, but you just get an early look at what he's suggesting to keep the detention center running appropriately.
And.
Association of Counties.
Yes, sir.
Our.
That, that's circulating around, that's, that's.
Yes, sir, that actually.
For everybody, okay.
Oh, gee.
I have a copy for each twenty.
Great, yeah, appreciate that. And the staffing analysis is basically going to tell us how many is recommended by the state?
Yes, ma'am. Some of the positions got froze from previous administrations, like it was, um, people had, um, maybe too big a titles and stuff, and I think when council froze those positions, they were looking at the titles and not as y'all actually froze my floor positions.
And I, I'll add too, um, we've been fighting this all year. Um, we did change the shifts of their schedule during the year to save a significant amount of overtime and also to try to keep our officers as fresh as we can, uh, by keeping straight days and straight night schedule instead of rotating. They would rotate every three days. Um, and we also, uh, have really worked to, um, recruit as, as good as we can, but we're just really not competitive. Um, and you can, I think, Ms. Lawson, I'll share too, you can look around at the other local facilities in the state and everybody else has massive shortages. So we are talking about, thinking about, um, trying to add some kind of incentives to have people available when we need them, like last night, but it's happening more and more. So, and come back in COVID and, and everything else with it has really uh, stretched our office staff during the day too, because we have officers who do administrative work during the day who are pulled off of their job every day to go help in the back. So we're, we're stretched in there.
Mr. Carter.
And.
What, what's, what's the starting pay for a de- detention center officer?
I believe it's around thirty-four thousand.
And, and are you saying that, um, have the same kind of visions across the state?
They are, uh, e- especially our area, I believe.
I was running for shifts and I come, uh, during the COVID time, I had two officers in the hospital with blood clots in their lungs, and then I've just had an officer get deployed to Germany. Um, and I've got a young lady that's, um, leaving, um. Something happened at the jail and it kinda really upset her. Um, it, it just wasn't something she was expecting, so she's, uh, turned a resignation in, and that's two more that's, you know, it's, it's gone. And so when the four shifts got condensed down to two shifts, and now people are dropping off of those shifts, I, it's just hard to keep the doors open and it's, it's not competitive.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
Okay, now we'll have, um, Ms. Diana White with the Transit Department. And her budget starts on page forty-six.
Excuse me?
Yes, forty-six. And I'll explain a little bit about hers. Um, it's got several sub-departments. There's an operations, an administration, operations, and a Medicaid sub-department under administration. Um, and that is, we'll move out, um, Ms. Diana's department is partially funded by South Carolina D O T grant, and so each month when we file the report for what is, is gonna be qualified and reimbursed, we'll move those expenses down out of general fund in a special revenue fund, but we have to track it by these sub-departments, so that's why, why there are those subs under Department Fifty-Six. Um, and I'll turn it over to her from here.
Any questions?
Well, thank you. Right now, we're just asking for just a small amount in our capital. Um, we're asking for our, um, um, funding of twenty-one thousand dollars from the county. And that's just the ten percent that we, we are needed in order to, um, get the grant funding for the roof, the windows, and the paving area. So that's most of the capital that we will be needing for this, um, fiscal year. And we also wanted to, we had a freeze in our administration, um, last year, we're also requesting that freeze also.
So are, are you saying that, um, with twenty-one thousand additional dollars besides what's in the budget? That's what you're asking?
N- not additional, just what, my capital that I'm asking for.
So you're asking for a capital request?
I- i- is that, is that currently in the budget?
That is not in the general fund part, no, um.
Capital request.
It, it would be in the capital request, yes.
Yes.
Okay, and, and you asking for twenty-one thousand dollars to get a grant, and the grant would be how much?
Two hundred and, the grant itself is two hundred and nineteen thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Okay, so you need twenty-one thousand to get two hundred and nineteen thousand. That's, that's not a hard decision, eh?
That's right.
Okay.
Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. Whitaker, on your, uh, administrative approved this budget here, all the positions that was frozen last year, are they included in here?
No.
They still frozen?
And now you're saying you had a freeze in one administrative position?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So you're asking for that position to be reinstated?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. White, do we have a total of the amount it'd be for the positions that are frozen if we unfreeze them?
I don't, go ahead.
I can't reme-
Yes.
I, I have one million three hundred nine thousand.
Just for all of them, that's froze?
No, that was, um, we kind of went with each department, ones that were absolutely necessary. Those would have been our recommendations, but we've since taken that out.
So that would be an additional one million dollars?
That would have been, that was kinda in the original recommendation for we.
When we had the two point nine over.
Okay.
That's what the people were asking for.
Yeah.
How many positions is frozen countywide?
Um, I don't know, pop my head in, sorry.
Um, I would have to look back at that ordinance and count them. Um, they're listed twenty-four.
So we, we currently have three hundred, um, field positions, and you- And you say another twenty-four on field?
These are, this is what was frozen last year. That's what I was.
So then, I guess if you look at the Association of Counties, for a county our size, three oh eight is an outlier. Okay, we're a county this size, okay, and then you're saying it ought to be three twenty-four?
Let me, let me, let me add some clarity to that three oh eight. So we're you, we're using the three oh eight as a data point to do analysis, right? And some of the folks have done a really good job of saying, you know, our three oh eight is because we're providing different services. So one of the things we're doing is, we want to look and see what it, what our three oh eight means. What does it mean to provide the level of services that we do? But it is a, based on the size of the county, if you look at the size of the population of the county, we have a lot of staff compared to other counties who have similar population that, I mean, that's just, that's a fact. But what does that mean in terms of the level and quality of services that we provide? And that's what, we want to continue to do analysis on that. So you know, data could be used for a lot of different things, but we, we're looking at that. What does it mean when other counties that are around twenty, between, you know, twenty and thirty thousand, have a hundred and seventy-three, a hundred and ninety-three? What does that mean? We don't, we don't know yet. But we are looking, if you put, if you line it up, it does look like we have more staff than counties of a similar population.
It looked like it, because you know, we had the conversation with the Association of Counties. I mean, Fairfeet County is an outlier as it relate to budget and and the staff.
Okay, I just need some clarification, Mr. Chairman, please. When we're taking a look at, I just want to make sure that we have the numbers correct. So at this point in time, how many frozen positions do we have?
I was just referring to the ordinance last year, okay? That what was frozen in, I think I said twenty-four?
Okay, great.
Yes, ma'am.
So there are twenty-four frozen positions. All right, and then we have forty to fifty positions that are unfilled. Am I?
It's actually, I'm looking at total proposed from last year is three thirty-seven. And I'm, we didn't add anything this year, so that was full-time employees.
Okay, so then, am I correct that it's thirty-seven unfilled positions?
Right now, as of right now, are frozen. You talking about just?
So you're.
Vacancies.
Saying that those are frozen, is what you're saying? Unfilled positions are frozen?
No, ma'am. The, we have vacancies. So we may have, those twenty-four are not counted in the, in that number. We just may have, our current count fluctuates from week to week when we hire and people leave. So we have about three hundred and thirty-seven full-time positions.
Before the next budget work session, could we get a list of all the frozen positions?
Frozen positions.
Department?
Okay.
Mr. Carter, one quick question. So three thirty-seven, I mean, that includes the Sheriff's Department EMS, all of that, correct?
Right, that's right.
Any more questions for Ms. White?
Ms. White, do you need any, you need any vehicles, any buses?
No, sir. I'm actually working on a budget with DOT for the vehicles, because I already knew that we were having a little struggle on this side. And I almost, and I also like to state that the administrative assistant position will not be fully funded by the county, because DOT also will pay certain portion of that administration salary also.
Do you know how much they pay?
It varies. It'll be like forty-four percent. Right now, we like up in the forty-four, fifty percent.
Okay, and that's the position that's frozen?
Just an aside question, what do you do with your excess equipment? So what happens when you retire a bus or you retire?
With DOT, we have to take it out of the, take it out of our count, bus count. I haven't reached the county, what the county actually does, but if if our buses for South Carolina DOT reach its actual age, we have to take it out of the, out of the, um, we can keep it, but we cannot use it as public service.
Yes, so so my question is, you can use it, but what happens to it? Do you sell it? Do you have it state surplus? How how is it handled?
It should be sell, but like I said, I haven't been able to witness that process with the county here.
Okay.
So it's a process that I would have to.
Yeah, usually with any assets that roll off, we sell them through state surplus.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Thank you for being here.
Welcome.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Okay, I guess now we'll we'll revert back and just go in order by department. And that's going to start about page five. Do y'all want to, do y'all want to just flip by department? Or do you want to look at the total list? And if there's a specific department, just call them at that time? Just start on page five, okay? That first department is county council. And let's see. That total went up, and I'm, let me say this before we even get started. Many departments, we're going to have an increase. Basically, almost all departments, we're going to have some increase. And it's going to be the result of insurance and retirement. So if if those are the only reasons, then, you know, I might just say that so we don't repeat that time after time. But with with county council, as you can see, that is, all of the increase was in personnel services related to insurance and retirement. The next department is legal services. And we increased that mainly just looking at at the history and what we think will spin. Yep, the next. Is everybody? We're, okay. Page seven starts county administration. And that, there are some overall decreases there. Some of it's related to personnel. We, our reception process is a little bit different where we've got to. Where we've got two part-time people and we don't have to rely on temporaries to fill in if somebody's on vacation. And we've also got some internal people trained to fill in if if one of the part-time people has to be out. We've we've got some internal people trained to help cover that. So I think that's that's everything there. Like I said, that was overall decrease.
I apologize, I was trying to get through the correct page.
That's all right.
Page six, so you expect the attorney fees to go from two hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred thousand?
I do. And like I said, we looked at at, you know, history there. Two fifty is the adopted budget for twenty twenty-two, but but we are, we are going to exceed that. I don't, I think we'd be kidding ourselves if we just budget two fifty. And and if we need to get more detail and more history, you know, we can can provide that. But I can get a trend. Any other questions on that or?
County. Like I said, I was trying to catch back up. The county administrator's budget. That includes. Does that include like the deputy administrator?
Yes, sir.
The receptionist? Receptionist, but what about the two consultants we had that one just recently left? Is that included in that county administrator's budget?
I think those were in our general operating department. Let's see. No.
Yep.
I'll have to look at that. But in the, in the salaries portion of county administration, no, they would, they would not be. They would be coded under professional services. And as I was saying, you can see in the, the personnel budget of administration, kind of some flip flops between full-time and part-time. And then, of course, there's a reduction of medical insurance, because we're using some part-time employees versus full-time employees. So that that accounts for the decrease in administration. In the finance department, we had a slight increase. And again, I think a lot of it is the result, is related to personnel services, temporary, I'm sorry, medical insurance, retirement. And actually, to to take one of our positions that, we had two vacancies, one which was frozen, one which we just simply did not fill. But to reduce some of our budget for our annual audit and and try to get that existing position funded. But the the total increase is a result of retirement and medical insurance. Any additional questions? In the human resources department, again, we had some slight increases related, really, the overall increase is almost entirely related to insurance and retirement. And in the purchasing department, the same, it's it's totally a result of insurance. They had no other increases.
I guess there's one question. We all have, we all have the, I guess, the books and everything to look at. Should we just go by, if 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 we have any, any department head, anybody want to report? Let's just go through that if any.
That's fine with me. I mean, whatever, in the interest of time, whatever y'all, you guys want.
Okay.
Open it up and?
Well, I can still go in order. We'll just pick up.
Do we have anybody who just want to want to appear before council? Because you've already, you've already met with all the department heads?
Yes.
Okay.
I've said what I.
Got their recommendations.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll start. I guess I'm probably the first one up. Our request for HR was twenty thousand dollars for a class and comp study. The last one that was conducted was in twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen. Obviously, we've seen a ton of inflation and different circumstances. We've had a lot of responsibilities change. And I feel like we need to look at our positions overall to be sure that we are paying people according to the job that they're doing. We had, they will help us address turnover, the current benefit package that we have, and and just give us a good idea of where we sit in terms of compensation for our employees.
Okay, so again, let me, let me, let me say this. Is that, is his request in the budget?
It's not.
Okay, and it's not in the budget? And ba- and based on, what I'm getting to is based on what you had to work with? The thirty-three million dollars and we went over one million. Okay, that's with the ten percent cut. Okay, is, okay, is there anything, okay, is there anything other than what you've already recommended that you see us doing?
You want to talk about, because because I think folks are going to be talking about capital as well as, as well as operating. And so you want to kind of continue that conversation or you want to just talk?
No, I guess, you know, just, you know, we got a lot of people up here. I'm just trying to get, get through. If if they got any. If they got anything other than what you recommended, if they want to come before council and ask for those recommendations, we can listen to that. That's what you're doing?
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
I think it'll be easy and faster.
Cut out before it got to us, that that we would like to hear and their needs on what they need for their department. And they might have went through the process with Mr. Whitaker and Ms. Williams, but all of council wasn't involved in that process. So, you know, I'd like to hear from the Recreation Center.
Yeah.
Mr. Diddleman and voters registered.
Just keep going. And I mean, to me, it's going pretty efficiently. I think it's important, though, for people, the question you're asking is if the, if it was something that was recommended outside of what was approved or what was recommended through us. So you could just just say.
Yes.
Okay.
It will, and that that was the case with that.
So now, did I hear you correctly? That was a compensation study?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yep.
Then do we have a cost for that?
I asked for twenty thousand. Yes, ma'am.
Now, are any three sixties done, three hundred sixty percent done for staffing from HR? By that, that I.
Oh, yeah, yes, ma'am. We, yes, ma'am.
And that's a regular part of your processes?
Yes, ma'am, we do for new hires. It was, we, we, in the past, we had done them for, as a yearly process, but that stopped some time ago. And we are looking forward to implementing that again. But we do do new hire appraisals within their probationary period. And I just want to, and while we're on that, I will add, since two thousand and fourteen, the cost of living increases have been five percent. Social Security increases, their cost of living that they have given during that time period is fifteen point six percent. This is outside of the tier that we did in twenty-one, because it was not the same for all salary ranges. So if you add into tiers, people below thirty thousand dollars have received eleven percent since two thousand and fourteen. People below forty have received nine percent. People below fifty thousand have received seven and a half percent. And people above fifty thousand have received six percent since two thousand and fourteen. Since two thousand and ten, the retirement system employee contributions have increased two and a half percent. Employee insurance is going to go up fourteen percent last year and this year. And just to see the state, what they're doing, right now, it's proposed three percent cost of living for employees and an additional fifteen hundred dollar bonus. They also are evaluating covering the insurance costs that have gone up too.
So, Mr. Carter, you're saying that from two thousand and fourteen until present, we have an average of five percent of what we're giving to employees as far as raises, correct?
That's outside of the tier.
Right.
You know, we did the tier structure that one year. Outside of that is five percent.
But Social Security has went up fifteen point six percent during that time.
Yeah.
Insurance has went up fourteen percent during that time.
That's correct. And the Social Security cost of living adjustment that they assign every year takes into effect the Consumer Price Index and a lot of other factors. So when we look at compensation and how it moves from year to year, that's usually our baseline. That's our starting. So when we look at compensation and how it moves from year to year, that's usually our our baseline. That's our starting point. We like to stay close to that.
I know Fairfield County has to to kind of work within their budget, but you being in human resources and specializing in that field, wouldn't you recommend instead of a bonus of cost of living raised to offset the cost of retirement and insurance if we could afford to do that?
But I think that's kind of, over time, we have done that and you find yourself where we are. So I think that's okay sometimes, but you you fall behind over time.
With the bonus or with the cost of?
With the bonus, yeah. You you know, some years the county has done the bonus and some years the cost of living, but as you can see, you have people who don't progress in their pay range, and I talked about a couple of years ago, the way most state governments and and governments in general are built to reward retention and tenure. And that's done by cost of living increases. And when you don't have those, people don't progress in their pay band like they should. So that's that's the problem you get.
Thank you.
Can you say this has been going on since twenty fifteen?
This is just since twenty fourteen. Yes, sir.
All right. Any more questions for Mr. Carter? All right. Yeah? Oh, you you wanted to say something? Okay.
Okay, so what I'll do, I'll just go in order by each department. And if, when I get to your department, if you have something, you know, you want to say, um we'll come up then. So I think the next department after Brad is data processing. Is Marvin, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
You can and 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 also tell what you asked for and then what we basically said, you heard that we weren't going to be on.
Thank you, council and administration. I'm Marvin Allen, Director of IT. And I've requested to fill a vacancy that's been in my department for a little over three years. And the reason is, uh obviously, the the demand for protecting our data never ends. Plus, with the new facility, we got a new audio visual system that we have to run about, operate, and a new system that makes badges for employees that we'll have to to man ourself and operate that too. Plus, eh all the other day to day operations that we do to keep the data center operational. So essentially, you know, we we're only three people and we support thirty four departments to make sure that voice and data is always active and available for the county's business. So I'm asking to fill that vacancy that's been open for three years.
That's a frozen position?
No, it was eh, there's a, there's a long story behind that, actually. Um it was a position that was emptied and um, long story behind it, but no, it's not really frozen.
So is that position still on the on the books, so to speak?
It's not. No, sir.
Did it have to be a new position?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
What is the cost of that position?
I I can only speculate around a salary of forty thousand dollars, starting salary plus benefits.
I think we were budgeting around seventy thousand.
And forty thousand, probably a low number really to hire, you know, somebody who's effective.
Um, did I hear you say seventy thousand?
Yes, ma'am. That includes insurance, retirement and taxes and everything. Yes, ma'am.
Any questions for Ms. Adams?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, um the next department is the tax assessor is. Just, hey, look, you know, I can't see you, right behind me.
That's pretty much the same.
Okay. All right. Um after that is the delinquent tax collector is Ms. Watkins. I'm not sure she's here. Um she actually had a a small decrease. She has very small departments, basically staff and minimal supplies. Um the next department is building maintenance.
What what page?
Would you? I'm, but I was just going down the list if somebody spoke.
No, just what page are we on? Fifteen?
Fifteen, yeah, okay, yeah, I got you. I was looking at my overall list. Um the next department is building maintenance. Mr. Branham?
Guess I'll be clear. My staffing too. Um. I'm guessing total probably, I'm looking at probably about eighty thousand, eighty five thousand dollars just in uh for personnel and the personnel, well, I say this. Um I had two folks that we was getting paid out of our temp service money, and I didn't have it last year, and it's been paid uh by Public Works out of their temp money. And that's to keep the grass service and all going. Uh actually, if they wouldn't have had helped us out, uh we would have lost service cutting grass and stuff. And now, uh got uh my folks cutting grass and do we do have a contractor, a vendor that's helping us. Uh second thing, uh I was requesting a couple of temps uh for the new building. Ms. Adams, ain't no way in the world she can clean this building by herself. You know, if we don't get it, we're gonna do the best we can. That's what we'll do. Um. I can't carry, I can't carry the inmate ladies by there uh on account of the sheriff and children. So that's kind of puts her there by herself. So really, it's gonna be more than, I think, than what she can do. That's pretty much what we needed, so.
So, go ahead. As a total of four four positions?
Right, two two already had, two already had, and then, like I say, uh Public Works helped us pay them last year. Uh. And we was looking to get them put back in my budget so we could pay them. Um and then the two of the administration building would help Ms. Adams do the cleaning because it's like it's a lot of square footage up there and she just ain't gonna be able to to service and clean that whole building. And we really don't want it to get behind right off the bat, gonna do, I mean, folks going in and out, that's gonna be a mess. And again, you know, we're gonna do what we gotta do if we do or don't get them.
So so you think it is gonna take two additional people just for the?
Two temp, I'm thinking two temps. It's a lot of ground, a lot of floors and and you'll have to walk a hundred yards to take the trash out. It trash cans will be behind the old um cafeteria, so to speak, so. And I do have a buggy up there wheels, but just things like that. No, sweeping, mopping, stuff is it's a, it's a lot of square footage up there.
Mr. Branham, so you you said building maintenance is responsible for all the gra- grass cutting in Fairfield County or all the buildings?
Correct. Now, we do it now. I do have uh two trucks running and inmates, uh probably two inmates on each truck. And we are cutting a certain amount of grass, but it's so much of it, we do have a contractor that is cutting like the Commerce Center, the uh uh Walter Brown, one and two. Um uh Adoption Center, Schoolhouse, and the rest of it, we cut it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
All right. Um after Mr. Branham, the next department is community development. Um Mr. Steins, do you have anything?
Uh good evening, council. Mine's probably pretty cut and dry, and I'll have to bill up open here that I really didn't get to see, get to see the manager recommended. So I'm not sure this is in there or not, but one uh bigger expense I'd had was we need to update our land management plan. Uh it's been about twelve years since we've done that. There was a thirty thousand increase for that, and then I did ask for one staff person as well. That would be a code and zoning enforcement uh individual. Um since my tenure here of six months, the level of requests for um litter and illegal dumping has been a pretty substantial thing we've been having to deal with, and we're all pretty familiar with it. Monica is our only code enforcement officer at this time, and she's pretty stretched thin. We try to help her where we can and screening and 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 scheduling things. Um but she's the, she's the person that's in charge of that. Um with that, though, if, when you'll look at my um fee schedule, I have proposed an overall twenty one point three one percent increase in our fee schedule for this coming fiscal year. That would put us at a fifty percent cost recovery. So uh this past year, we're at about a twenty eight percent cost recovery. And operationally, that's fine, but if you look at our staff and then operations, uh we're not quite covering everything, so. But with that, there would be a uh an increase in revenue this coming year if council approves the fee schedule as as I've presented it, so.
Okay, uh just just let me understand this a little more. Uh for currently or for next year, you expect to have twenty one percent cost recovery with your fee schedule?
Uh no, ma'am, I I expect, uh I'm estimating a twenty one point three one percent increase from this past year. So this year, we did about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in fee collection overall. And I'm anticipating about twenty one percent additional for this coming for the increase in fees. I've I've evaluated four other counties that are similar to size and geographic as well, population base, and how their fee schedules are mapped, and I've mirrored and made up for some of our own county fees where we should be.
Mr. Whitaker, i- is this fee schedule something that we're going to do in this budget or is it gonna come before us another time to be voted in favor of?
It's gonna come before y'all. Um because there is some, you know, the the road maintenance fee has kind of come to light statewide. Um we kind of held off on sending it right now, hoping to hear back from the attorney if we need to take that out or not. That way, we can bring it to you and it'll be ready. Um but it would go through I I as I understand it, how the fee schedule works, of course, it'll go through three readings. Any new fees will be, you know, brought forth in the public hearing if it's just changes, you know, it'll all be listed. But but I think the new fees are what is is critical to get in the public hearing.
Okay, and the other part, you do need another code enforcement officer? Are you asking for another code enforcement officer?
Y- yes, ma'am. If there's any staff that we could utilize, it would be, and I had, I had proposed that they be uh a hybrid of code enforcement and and assistance with zoning, because zoning and code enforcement kind of go a little hand in hand with the two, and I'm currently doing the zoning, planning, and and acting community development director position, but and then floodplain management, and we're just getting a lot of increase in public and a lot of demand for development right now. So it's gonna get busy.
So how how much recovery fee um does other counties have related to um how much money you normally get for these services you provide um versus other counties get? How much?
It usually, it it really varies. It it did, because you got municipal, then you got county. And historically, usually municipalities will will usually do um a hundred percent cost recovery. Sometimes counties can't for various reasons for spread of resources and the elected officials' willingness to, you know, provide subsidy in some sort. So it really is a determination made by council. But if you look at other counties, most are recovering seventy five to a hundred percent of their costs in a planning and zoning type department or community development.
And how much are we recovering?
This past year, we only recovered twenty eight percent, which is pretty far below the average. And I proposed a twenty one percent to hopefully match fifty percent. And my logic behind that is I want to keep the sensitivities to the citizens of the county as well developers and not spike so much that it stalls our services through developmental fees and those kinds of things.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Steins.
Thank you.
And I I guess, um before you go, one one question to Mr. Carter. If you were to, if he was to add a code enforcement officer, are you talking about another sixty thousand dollars?
For a full time employee, probably closer to seventy.
Okay.
Okay.
Right. Um the next department is our vehicle maintenance department. Um and I'm not sure uh that anybody's here. Um from there, after that would be economic development. So.
Uh good evening, council. Um my uh my budget hasn't changed a whole lot, uh not a lot to ask. I did have some, recommended some reductions, actually. Um and I I think I control like eighty four thousand dollars. Uh and it made some suggestions, it took out about sixteen thousand out of that, so. Um the one thing I would want to point out, because the Fairfield Commerce Center, all the development we're doing out there, there's a good bit more, there will be more mowing and more maintenance out there, uh so we need to take that into account. That's not part of my budget, but I do want to make everybody aware that there's gonna be a good bit more going on, trash pickup and um uh grass mowing and so forth.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Dunlap?
You're just saying you need an increase of trash pickup and mowing and those kinds of things. You're looking for some beautification out there or what?
Yes, ma'am. Uh with the the pad that just was completed, we'll probably do, I will definitely do some landscaping. So there's gonna be, we have to take care of all that, and uh I don't think that's been accounted for yet. Might have to install irrigation and some stuff like that, but yeah.
All right. Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dunlap.
Um the next department is detention center. We've already heard from Ms. Lawson. Um that takes us down to page twenty two, which is public works. Mr. Burrows?
Good evening. Um mine are capital, which is um the main issues we have. We did the five year plan. Um one is uh for the road maintenance side are two bridges, which we've, they've increased approximately thirty to forty percent since they were out and closed by DOT. So we're looking at uh Banksware Road, which CTC will pitch in a hundred thousand dollars because it's on a paved road. Um and then, so that we're looking at about five fifty, five hundred fifty thousand for that bridge. And Bull Run is a repair versus a replacement, which is about one seventy five. I know this is a stretch, but I'm I'm gonna at least bring it to you guys. Um and a, the Flex Moore, which is a mower we pull behind the tractor, which would also help tie at the Bomag area and the airport. It'll replace um a side mower on the tractor that's uh two thousand and six model. So the the mower is about fifteen years old, um and that'll cycle that one out. And that's on the, that's on the road maintenance side.
What's the price on it?
Twenty three thousand. Any questions on the road maintenance before I get to solid waste?
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Burrows, what what concerns me is with the road maintenance is I I think you stated last year that there was five bridges in Fairfield County that needed to be replaced or repaired. And you just came before us today saying that two of those bridges in the last couple of months has increased thirty four, thirty to forty percent. I guess on.
Basically, since COVID hit, every, the the cost of material, we can save probably sixty, eighty thousand in demo in house, but the rest is gonna be, you know, through construction and engineering.
Yeah, what what concerns me is is these five bridges, i- if we don't get a hold to them and get them replaced soon, the amount of money that they're going to increase over the next year or two years. If if we could replace the five bridges, if it was feasible, wha- what are you thinking total wise that we would be looking at if those five bridges were replaced?
Uh right now, and again, the market's very volatile, so it's, I mean, prices are fluctuating. So for the, all of those are looking at least about two point one, two point two million to have all of them replaced correctly, passing inspection, engineer fees. Um.
I have a question, um.
Yes.
Okay.
I'd just like to make a comment, Mr. Chair. Um when we take a look at the infrastructure. When we take a look at the infrastructure money that's being considered at this particular point in time at the state, I think that we still don't know because.
Absolutely, yeah. We keep digging into separate, different grants to, we're, we're trying to apply for everything we get our hands on.
Yeah, so I, I know that they have held off so far delineating exactly where that's going to go or what pot it'll be placed in for, for us to apply for grants and all. So, um, you know, my just, my caveat is that making sure that we have all of those priority needs identified and cost out so that once the, um, specifications are given, that we're ready.
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, let's just make sure, because, you know, as far as I'm concerned, that money should come out of infrastructure money that's already proposed.
Mr. Burrows, um, Green, um, made one of my points too. How long have these bridges been out?
A couple of them were closed shortly after I got here, uh, twenty twenty. Um, so we're looking at anywhere from two, year and a half, two years.
Okay, oh, oh, so all five bridges?
Yes, sir.
Just been, since twenty twenty?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we don't have no other bridges out?
Uh, not currently.
Okay.
State bridges we made, but as far as county roads, no.
So what'll be the cost for, I think, the Fort Wagner, Fort Wagner Bridge?
Fort Wagner, we're looking at
uh, approximately four, four fifteen. And that's to put it back as is. If we want to go wider with the double lanes and, you know, a shoulder as well, then you're gonna go up another twenty, thirty percent on that. We've looked at doing some, we have some options to put pipe in on some areas, but then you get into, uh, buying into the mitigation bank where you gotta pay the government because you're impacting the stream through the pipe. So, we're, we're adjusting that as well to see if that's an option. Maggie Harris is kind of the only option for that one because the span is shorter.
So, Mr. Burrows, um, Glen Bridge Road, there must be a state road?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and it's out, but it's a state road?
Yes, sir.
Can, can you briefly right quick, because I don't want to hold nobody up? The five bridges is out, can you kind of run through them right quick to say where they at?
Yes, uh, we got Banksware, Bull Run, Fort Wagner, Maggie Harris, and Scott Crossings. And a lot of these, we're looking at, you know, like Bull Run nineteen sixty. So, they were put, a lot of them were put in before there was any kind of, on these county roads or I'm a reason, just get us to the other side.
What about that bridge we was talking about the other day? The one who just got a piece of cement across it? That's on a dirt road?
Yeah, it's just a cross and it's not a bridge. The slabs that are in the, in the water, yeah, an old twenty-one?
Yeah, so that's not a bridge at all?
No, it's, it's just, just a cross in there. So the waters.
What would, what would we have to do to fix that then? It's just a cross bridge?
Another bridge?
A bridge to do it.
Another bridge. Well, I mean, if there's not a bridge, then we'd have to build a bridge there, because now it's just, you know, they dug the banks back and put the slabs in there to cross.
Okay, all right. Anyone?
Any, any vehicles besides, besides, I know you said a mower, any other vehicles you need?
Not on the road maintenance side. We do have on the solid waste side for a cardboard truck, which we are, um, we're getting, uh, fifteen thousand from the, the grant. This is a truck that we can haul the, the cardboard, the materials from, the sites, the TVs, electronics, tires, appliances. So through the grant, we'll get fifteen thousand, so we're just asking for fifteen thousand to match the difference. And that's it on the solid waste side. We've got some roll-off trucks coming in the next couple of years that we need to, to roll, to phase out.
I, I know that in the past, we talked about, um, revenue, and I think that it might be on the solid waste side. We talked about, um, selling the, um, the steel, the.
Yes, ma'am, we went from about twenty-four, twenty-five thousand when we were, uh, having a contractor come to where we, this past year, we brought in about fifty-eight thousand, uh, doing it in-house.
Now, do we have a, do we have any excess costs with that, or is that pretty much?
Uh, just fuel to get it to the recycle, to, we take to, um, mid-Carolina Steel. So about twenty, twenty-four mile ride one way.
Any other questions for Mr. Burrows? Okay. Thank you, sir. Oh, no, you're doing the.
He keep on going.
Well, you, you just halfway through, right?
Um, I'd, can I, can I speak on the recycle sites? As it came up earlier on the Monday, um, we get the same calls as it being closed on Monday. There was a savings of about fifty-three thousand, because we're not paying those attendants on that Monday. Um, and we're in line with the counties around us as far as the days open, the hours open, fifty-two hours a week. Like Newberry, they're actually closed three days. Chester's closed three days. We had thirty-two thousand residents. Lexington has almost three hundred thousand residents, and they run the same amount of hours as we do, fifty-two hours. So, if we, if that comes up, just know that'll be more costs for attendants. And we were having to run on Saturdays to keep up with the garbage with our roll-off guys. So we're having to pay them overtime on Saturdays to keep up. We haven't worked a Saturday in, probably since July when everything came into effect. We understand the, the concerns from the citizens, but it's been a significant savings as well on the vehicles on overtime and to pay for attendance.
Okay, since you, since you bring that up, if you, if you owe me all day wins, what would that be?
That's going to kill us on running our scrap metal. That's when we're running that.
Okay, and you couldn't change the days?
I mean, I honestly, I don't think if changing the days is gonna matter, it's gonna be, it, it's not gonna, it's gonna be an issue regardless of what day. Whether, I mean, you can't be back-to-back days, so it'd have to be, if it's not Monday, then it ought to be Friday. So, it's definitely something we can discuss and see if there's some common ground to, to come to an agreement on.
Do the other recycling centers be open twelve hours?
No, majority of them are ten to eleven.
So, we, we possibly could get some days, another day, it'd be showing some hours?
A lot of them shorten hours when the clock turns back in the fall, they'll, they'll open later, close earlier because of the day, daylight savings. So, it just depends, it varies county to county.
Thank you.
Keep on. You had more?
Uh, no, sir, that's it.
Okay.
Y'all don't have anything else on solid waste either?
Solid waste. I thought that was good on solid waste.
Okay.
Nope, that's it.
Okay.
We, we roll off, we're gonna push that off to.
Okay.
We can get by another year at least without that.
All right, um.
I think.
Thank you.
Um, the next department is animal control. Yeah, Mr. Ennis is out of the country. His main, and I'll let, it's an easy, if you want to jump in anytime, but his main request was to get some money back for temporary help. Where they just having a hard time, you know, getting kennel attendants and such. Do, do either y'all want to speak to that more or? Okay.
Did he ask for a vehicle?
He did.
He did a vehicle, and I can read his first name.
Um, as far as capital, he did have a, a new vehicle request to replace one of their older trucks that they have in animal services. Some of their increase in cost, he did have a personnel request, which Brad can touch on as well. But some of the other initial requests that came from animal control was they're seeing an increase in people dropping off animals. There's a lot of animals in the county. They're having a, um, challenge dealing with the number of people who are dropping off their, their pets. Um, then we're responsible for having to find placement for the pets, the medical costs associated with the pets. The current county ordinance, if you pick up a resident's dog before they release it, if that dog does not have rabies, is not spayed or neutered, then the county ordinance requires that we do that before it's released. And then we hope that they pay us back for that. The ordinance says they have to pay us back, but then if they don't, that's just cost that the animal control, animal shelter has to kind of bear, according to the ordinance. And then he's also seeing an increase in the cost of dog food and the cost of the vet supplies. And so, Long Range is looking at how can we, um, supplement veterinary services? Um, Long Range also looking at upgrading the facility, um, as a long-range plan to up, because our shelter is, is very packed right now with the increase in, in animals. So, those were the needs behind his requests for increases, which, again, all capital requests are on that separate capital sheet, and we weren't able, in order to try to keep the budget as close to revenues as possible, we did not include, uh, personnel. But he is having issues with challenges with overtime, um, because he had some positions frozen. He had a temp position that was frozen, so now full-time staff are having to come if there's calls on the weekends, or calls from the town. Full-time staff is having to step in in that situation where, uh, the temp, our part-time staff would have done it previously.
Do we have an estimate as to how much that temp position would cost?
I can pass that to Brad to answer.
I think the request from Bob was twenty-seven thousand.
I think, Frank?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
And now, in the past, was it true that, um, some prison, uh, prisoners were used to?
Yes, ma'am, and he still does. He still does use inmates, but, um, you have certain requirements there for supervision that, um, so it will require his full-time staff now to supervise them and take them out of other areas. Like, like Ms. Williams mentioned, the weekends are hitting them pretty hard, and there's another department where we just cannot keep help.
Now, isn't there a policy, those fees that Ms. Williams talked about? When you pick up an animal and you have to give them their shots and the, the burden of the costs is on the county, isn't there a policy that they're not released to the owner until the owner pays the fees? Okay.
Any other questions? Animal control? Any question? Okay.
Okay. The next several departments, um, I'm not sure, uh, if, if there's anybody here. We have, um, the probate, the tax auditor, the county treasurer, the clerk of court, and family court. And I'm not, I didn't think, I didn't think I saw anybody. Those all had very modest changes. Um, I think several of them tried to trim back where they could. And then Ms., Ms. Bonds was just saying she had to go, but she didn't, didn't have any, have any increases. So after that, that will take us to page thirty-one, which is our county coroner, Mr. Hill.
Good afternoon. I'm just had, uh, small changes or whatever, um. I did was able to take six thousand dollars out of my budget where I was given last year for laptops and all. So I was able to, um, tell the county administration that you can take that money back, because I got everything I needed last budget. Um, all my increases have been in, um, going toward autopsies, toxicology service. A lot of the pathologists now are short-staffed, so in order to get my autopsy done in a timely fashion and my toxicology, I had entered into an agreement with MUSC in Charleston and also Dr. Ward up at Greenville Pathology Group um, for autopsy services that need me. Normally, I use Newberry, um, been using Newberry probably over thirty-some years. But they are short-staffed, and I try to get my autopsy done in a timely fashion so the family can take possession of the bodies to do what they have to do. So that's, um, basically my costs have increased in that. Also, um, for my training, um, now we gonna have to be more proficient with organ procurement. Um, that's something that's coming down from the federal level. So then, that entails that me and my staff have to have additional training. And some of the training is not in the state of South Carolina, so we have to go out in order to get that. I also asked for, um, I think my budget increased by twenty-six thousand dollars. I asked for fifteen thousand, um, for a, um, used vehicle from state surplus. I had spoken with, um, Terri Smith from the sheriff's office. She made me aware of the state surplus. We've been in contact with the manager down there, he said he can get us a good vehicle, um, for a good decent price. The reason for the vehicle is that my deputy is now using their own personal vehicles to respond to calls. Certain situations require us to have emergency warning devices, um, that cause like, um, traffic fatalities, homicides, um, stuff like that, that require us to get there in a timely fashion. But my deputy is now driving their personal vehicle, you know, God forbid anything happen, even though they on a county assignment, you know, we would still have to, they would still have to pay their deductible. So, um, you know, a lot of the county corners that I have spoken with, um, stated that they do have some type of vehicle that their own deputy coroner can use, um, for them to, you know, to go in back and forth to calls and all. And, you know, that's, that's for insurance purposes, you know? I don't want my deputies to eat their costs or something if they get in an accident going to corners off of business. And that's a lot of wear and tear that they putting on their vehicles. Um, a lot of my deputy corners have been with me the entire six years I've been county coroner. So, you know, they putting gas in their vehicles, they responding to the calls, and, you know, nobody's griping and that, and I appreciate them for that. You know, they still serving the county, the citizens of the county, even though if the, the gas went up to four dollars, they still say, hey, you know, I'm here to serve the county. So, so that's basically all that I'm asking for, um, you know, for the, you know, at least the fifteen thousand, if I can get a used vehicle from the state surplus, that, you know, would be equipped with a radio and, you know, the necessary emergency equipment that we need. I also had spoke with Captain Pageant, um, he is over the fleet for the sheriff's office. Asked him, did they have anything that's coming offline that can be some, you know, used to me? And he said, the only thing they have is the old Tahoe, and he said, you don't want that. Yeah.
Mr. Mr. Hill, uh, Mr. Carter, I mean, that brings up an interesting question. So if a, a deputy coroner uses a personal vehicle to respond to a county emergency, are they covered up under the county's insurance?
Workers comp-wise, they would be, um, probably, I, I don't know. I don't know would be the answer, because they're, they're not really like a volunteer. So I would, I would have to check. But if Chris is checking, that's what he.
They, they part, always, um, I think they play and they pay into the retirement, they got.
They do, yes.
Retirement also.
Yeah. It, if they're using it, you know, on our behalf, it, it very well could be.
Okay.
Yeah.
What would be the difference between, uh, the volunteer firemen running the call compared?
I think just the volunteer aspect of it, um, because they're personally.
Because how would that be handled through the county?
If, then that's on them. That, it would be on a volunteer. The, as far as workers comp, um, you know, they have a minimum rate that they would, that they get if they are injured in the line of duty. But as far as their personal property, that's, they, they assume that risk.
I was thinking that the volunteer firefighters are, are classified as needed. Am I correct in saying that?
They are, well, they are, they are classified as needed, but they're not paid an hourly rate. They're paid a stipend, an annual stipend as, that's based on calls responded to and, um, I think educational requirements.
Okay, but I guess the point I'm making, they're not considered volunteers, they're considered as needed?
They're not employees.
They're not, they're not employees like hourly employees. We have to put them on the payroll to pay them an annual stipend, yes. But they are considered volunteer, you know, they're not considered employees.
Are they, do they get any county benefits, insurance, uh, nothing like that?
Okay, um, let me just clarify your request. Um, you're ask, you're asking for the fifteen thousand dollars for the vehicle.
Yes, ma'am.
And now you're going to have to have some uh customization there.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, and those kinds of things. Are we aware about how much that might cost?
Um, normally we um use our West Chatham and West Columbia and the county uh for the sheriff's office and all have been longtime customers along with myself. They they try to give us the best rate that they can. And, you know, we don't, you know, not ask for a whole lot for us, you know, for us customizing the vehicle. You just, you know, I I want my people to be protected because, you know, they all of them got full-time jobs. But, you know, they 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 have been with me, you know, all the years and stuff, and I try my best to take care of them at the same time. I don't want nothing to happen to them. You know, I I am only as good as the people that that work for me, you know. I give all credit to my staff. I don't, it ain't me. You know, they go out and do the jobs as well as I do, but I'm not going to take the credit for, it's it's an office thing. And we're a family, but, you know, it was, it brought my attention at a corner association meeting, you know, some corners were talking, yeah, we gotta, you know, we gotta explore some of that the deputy, on call deputy corner drive. I'm like, what the world? And then the president, um, the York County coroner who was the president, me and her had a conversation and she said, yeah, you rather them to be cover on the county insurance versus their insurance. And see that they get in an accident, driving their personal vehicle, they gonna sue the county. Because they was on county business. Now, if it's the in a county vehicle, it's different. You know, especially when they got the necessary equipment to get to that that scene or whatever.
Yeah, so do you have an an approximate
I'd say, um, uh, Councilman Green, I would say I can, I always can move money if need be, but I say for the radios and and the lights and all, I say I can probably get it done for seventeen. Yes, ma'am. That's give or take because I can, I can top them down or whatever.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
And um. So ba- basically, you're looking for that as well as an increase for your training costs.
Yes, ma'am.
So
And my autopsy costs is, yes, ma'am, and my toxicology.
You have, you put that in the budget.
Yes, ma'am, I did. Yes, ma'am. So everything in total um minus the extra two thousand dollars was like twenty-six thousand dollars. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
How many deputy corners do you have?
Um, I have five deputy corners. Um, one of them, he does my transports. Um, and plus he like on the at need a base. He fill in for other deputies that, you know, I didn't you know, a couple of months ago I got hit real hard. It was only like three of us because, you know, we had COVID. Um, some of us had COVID and some got sick, so, you know, he fills in, but he handle all my transports, all my autopsies. That'll free me and my my administrator up during the day because me and her is on call during the day. So we get a call, me and her respond. So back then, I used to have to take all the autopsies and just leave one person in the county.
So, um. You got fi- you got five deputy cars? So we're looking for one car.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Just one. Yes, ma'am. Just one. Whoever, my, the way my my shift works is that me and my administrator, we on call Monday through Friday from six AM to six PM. My deputy coroner who is on call for the week goes on call at six PM that Monday afternoon. They work nights and weekends. And so they'll be on call from Monday afternoon at six PM to the following Monday at six AM. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Any other question, Mr. Hill? All right, thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hill. Um, the next department is our sheriff's department. Um, I think Ms. Smith is here.
Yeah, we're working on, dude.
You didn't do five? They're not in alphabetical order.
What's that?
Okay.
Yeah.
Ready?
We just haven't got there yet. Fire?
Yeah, you didn't do five.
We just haven't got there.
He, he's sitting back there waiting patiently.
He doesn't hurry going nowhere.
Okay. Ms. Smith.
It's yours.
Um, good evening. Um, I think our biggest requests for this year are the vehicles. Um. We did not receive any last year. Um, we usually get six vehicles per year um and just kind of rotate them around, so that put us about twelve cars behind now. Um. Currently, we have seven vehicles that have over two hundred thousand miles. We have twenty-six vehicles that have over a hundred thousand miles and uh eighteen that have over fifty thousand miles. So, um. I think we have eleven that are in the fifteen to twenty-year-old and um twenty that are ten to fifteen years old. Um, you know, we put a lot of miles on these vehicles and uh it's it's a safety issue when you start getting a high mileage and all. I know a couple of years ago, um Councilman Polly suggested um that maybe as we got close to a hundred thousand miles on a vehicle that it would rotate off. Um, that has never been implemented. It it was um implemented back when I first came here, when it would get close to from ninety to a hundred thousand miles, they would take it off and even push it over to another county agency, you know, for them to use. Um. But these are emergency response vehicles and um we're just if we don't replace them each year, we get really behind on it.
I I I think you're talking about, you didn't get no, no cars in the last budget, but I thought just before the budget, I thought we got four new cars and one truck. Am I right?
We we usually get six, average six new vehicles a year.
Okay.
I think you were saying that at the end of the budget year twenty
Yeah, at the end of the budget year, just before um July, I want to think in May, you got four tr- four cars because we, um, I think you had wrecked some cars. And um because the county paid the insurance, they had four new cars and um and a truck. Am I right?
I think that's what we got from procurement, but I can make sure of that.
Yeah, so 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 we did get cars last year. That's just my point I make.
Well, let me say this, um. Some of those vehicles we got were from prior budgets because uh there's a shortage on vehicles right now. And they're pretty much um the Dodge Chargers, they are not making those anymore. Um, Ford is getting ready to come out with another Crown Vic, but uh pretty much they're the only people who are supplying police cars anymore. And uh that's throughout the whole United States, so there is a huge shortage. So we're just now receiving vehicles from the budget two years ago.
Ms. Smith, uh correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in our packet for ten vehicles, um five hundred and fifty thousand dollars is is that? Is that correct?
Um. I believe I put in there for twelve replacement vehicles. Uh, each vehicle on average is around thirty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars right now. Uh, that does include, does not include the equipment or outfit and from West Chatham uh to outfit the vehicle, and that includes radios and all. But most of all, our replacement vehicles, we just, we take the radios and transfer them over, so we don't have to buy new radios all the time, but um, you know, marking on the lights, things like that, we have to replace that.
And so, and so for the ten vehicles, you were requesting how much?
It was twelve vehicles. This uh comes up to around six hundred thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars.
Um.
Oh, that would have been
Just give me an idea of um the maintenance on the old vehi- vehicles that you have. Uh, we're talking about a hundred thousand dollar rotation. Uh, I'm sorry, a hundred thousand mile rotation of vehicles. Um, what, what kind of maintenance costs are we incurring?
Um, we budgeted, that that really comes out, well, it comes out of our budget, but uh maintenance shop keeps up with that, but we've got about twenty-eight thousand dollars um budgeted for that. Um, let's see. Uh. I I would have to uh add it all up. Motor vehicle supplies is sixty thousand is our budget for that. So that includes like oil changes, tires, you know, different equipment like that. Um. Some additional uh two thousand for equipment parts and supplies.
What year is Ford bringing the Crown Vic back?
Um. I'm not sure. I'm hoping twenty twenty-three. If not, we're gonna all be in bad shape.
Um. When, when we take a look at the um twelve vehicles, uh, would would we say that those are all required in this year? Are we staggering something? I I know that normally you stagger because, you know, of the replacement aspect, and I know that you didn't have cars last year. But buying all of the same cars, buying twelve cars in the same year, I I think of maintenance problems and the mere fact that you're gonna need twelve cars in in X number of years again, which seems like a lot to me. Is there a way to stagger your request and what would be?
Uh, I mean, we'll do whatever we have to do, but but, yes, ma'am, you're correct. We um, we ran into this thinking twenty-twelve, I think we we council didn't allow us any vehicles. We got so far behind that, you know, we had to ask for twelve more, so another year. So you're, you're exactly right. It's it's a burden. If you can rotate, that's kind of why we did the six vehicles each year. You know? And if you rotate them out like that, then we do very well with it. It it's worked in the past.
So. So we don't, we don't have a compromising position, if not twelve, how many would would satisfy us or for the budget session as we take a look at it?
Uh, again, we we will take what we can get from you. Um, you know, we we, you know, we don't really ask for more than what we need in our budget. We we run it tight as we can. Um, but, yes, ma'am, I mean, we we would be happy if we got six this year. I'll be honest with you, you know. Uh, but yes, it's it's, like you said, it's gonna catch up with us.
Right.
You know, um. You know, I I invite all of you to go down and drive some of these spares. I mean, they're it is, they're scary. Um, you push on the brakes and the seat goes forward. If you take off on the gas, the seat goes backwards. So it's just, you know, they're, they're worn out. Um, we, you know, we take care of them as well as we can, but um as you know, when, you know, I I've got here a nineteen ninety-nine truck that, you know, we need to take off the road that's got two hundred and thirty thousand miles on it. Um. The other week, sheriff went home and just got his personal vehicle while his was in the shop because there there wasn't anything decent to drive, you know. Um. And these guys, you know, you gotta understand, they're risking their lives. If if they get in a chase and they're, you know, it speeds over a hundred thousand, a hundred miles an hour, you know, they're risking their life. And and if uh wheel comes off or the drive shaft breaks or whatever, you know, that's gonna be a real huge cost to the county. Um, to that family. So, you know. But, yes, ma'am, we will, um, you know, we're like I said, we tried to do six each year. We didn't get any last year, and we are planning catch-up. And and it is hard right now to find vehicles. We're, um, I'm still trying to find one now to purchase to replace one that was wrecked, that the insurance is is paying for. Um, but, yes, ma'am, we'll, I mean, we'll work with you, absolutely. So, like I say, if we can get
So even if we looked at the ordering of vehicles now, your estimated time for receiving them and, you know, having them customized would be?
Again, it could be not even in this budget year. We we're lucky if we find some. Uh, I'm searching now. Um. Love Chevrolet right now contacted us. They've got some uh Tahos. Of course, they're more expensive than than the Dodge Chargers and all, but there's no Dodge Chargers. We're, we're actually buying pickup trucks now. And uh they're probably not the best pursuit vehicle out there, you know. Um, but but we gotta do what we, what we gotta do. So, um, uh, like I said, we're just now filling some of budget before last vehicles.
I have a question. Um. I thought at one time the uh maintenance director um would look at the cars and determine if the cars were reliable. Uh, i- is that still happening?
Yes, sir. We um rely on them to tell us, you know, what kind of shape they're in, but but we can't afford to take them off the road. We, I mean, we've got to have the vehicles. Even if it's breaking down on us, you know, or or dangerous to drive, we can't just sit the deputy downstairs in the office and him not be able to respond.
Okay, so we we we've gotten to that point to where the the maintenance department is telling you that the the vehicle is unsafe to drive?
Yes, they've, yes, sir. They keep records and they've got all that on file, so, yes, sir. I mean, y- you know yourself, you know, um, if you have a vehicle that's you know, fifteen years old and it's got almost three hundred thousand miles on it, or you're gonna get into chase. That's, that's just kind of common knowledge that that vehicle is not in good shape.
Okay.
All right. Any more question? All right. Thank you, ma'am.
That it?
All right. Um, after the sheriff's department, we have the magistrate's office, and I believe we've got Judge Feaster here.
Good evening. I'm Russell Feaster. I'm the chief magistrate for Fairfield County. Um. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with um you tonight. Uh, I do realize that uh county administration has put some money into our budget. Um, but I'm here to ask for funding for one full-time position. Uh, and that position is for court security. What I would hope to have is a uniformed sheriff's deputy to fill that position. Um, my justification is simple. You heard Ms. Lawson talk about, you know, the level of violence that we see day in and day out. It was just witnessed this weekend. We had a an entire weekend of uh uh tremendous violence, including here in South Carolina. So, um, it's my, you know, it's all about the safety and security of the citizens of Fairfield County. Uh, right now, we don't have uh controlled access to our only well, it's not our only access point, but obviously, we share a building with family court. Family court has an access uh at the front of the building. And our access is on the side. And on the side of that building, that's where everybody comes for magistrate's court. But we don't have any controlled access. Since I've been here in four years, we have a um metal detector, but what's the use if nobody's there to, you know, to man the thing? So, um. I personally have witnessed some incidents um in the past where um there's some level of I won't say violence, but it could have easily had escalated to that. One is um when I first started as a magistrate, you had to go around the county to do um observations. Uh, and I was doing an observation of uh General Sessions murder trial in Florence County. And obviously, counties like Florence, uh Lexington, Richland, all the large counties have security in every court and courtroom. But, uh, so Florence had probably five deputies in it. It was a pretty high-profile murder uh case and um one of the co-defend, at the end of the trial, the the defendants were found not guilty, but one of the, their um co-defendants uh testified against them. And so at the end of that trial, even though there is a number of Florence County deputies right there, uh, one of the co-defendants, you know, made a um um uh said something profane to one of the other guys and it almost escalated right there. So I I personally witnessed that. Um, also, um, I have come really close to a physical altercation in my own um courtroom. And it was just simply because a young man didn't want to wear his mask. And when I asked him to leave, he said he wasn't. He said he wasn't gonna wear the mask and he wasn't gonna leave. So, and then he threatened me. But the point is uh, we need uh uh security at magistrate's office, at the magistrate's court. Now, um. We do have, uh, the sheriff's office does um provide security for us for civil because in my opinion, civil court would probably be the most likely where um something might escalate because you have family member against family member, you know, things of that nature. So they did agree to help us out that way. But it's not enough. We need a full-time position. And the last and most important reason I'll say we need that position is it's mandated, it's been ordered by the Supreme, the Chief Justice of Supreme Court. He has ordered that every court in this state will have the proper security. And in my opinion, presently, we don't. The Chief Justice Beatty has the authority to shut the courts down. I'm not, I don't know if he will or not, but he has the authority. So I think it would behoove us all if you would really, really consider funding that. Because after you've been, you know, properly informed of the need, God forbid, if something bad should happen, how would the county look? And how would you defend a lawsuit? So I respectfully ask that you fund that position.
Mr. Feaster?
Yes, sir.
Now, isn't there a deputy that kind of goes back and forth between the courthouse and the magistrate's courts now? Just kind of floats back and forth between? But what I'm understanding is you're wanting one full-time magistrate's office, nine to five, Monday through Friday, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And to answer your question, there is a deputy who does that. But again, part of our building is for family court as well. So he has that responsibility.
Yes, sir.
I don't think that's adequate. The last thing I'll say is in order to get an idea of some of the violence that happens inside court, I would ask that you, when you get a chance, go to YouTube and search Court Cam. Now, the things that you'll see are anywhere from a judge being assaulted to inmates being assaulted, to families getting into a brawl inside a courtroom. You'll see those things. And you will also see those things happen right here in South Carolina. Recently, there was one in Orangeburg and York County that I saw on Court TV that was most recent.
So do we have an idea of how much this position will cost? And now, as I think is stated, it comes out of the sheriff's department, correct?
I don't know. I mean, I don't know how that would work. But listening to Ms. Bass and Mr. Calder, I had estimated about 40,000 for entry-level sheriff's deputy. But for South Carolina, but I didn't take into account the insurance.
Yeah, the fringe.
Yeah, right.
So you'd say that's about 70,000? Are we going with that?
Yeah. Yeah. What we've got built in here now, it currently does come out of the sheriff's department. They staff it. And so we've built, and it's not, as he was saying, it's not staffed full-time at this point. So we've built an additional 20,000 in there, you know, to bring that up, to be able to fund full staffing there.
So you already have it in there?
Yes, sir. We've got that. That is one item that's built in. And that was mainly left as it relates to, you know, the chief justice mandate.
But he would have to get with the sheriff, correct? And the sheriff would make the request for the officer?
Yes. Well, it's staffed with existing staff at this point. And we built additional money in rather than a brand-new position to allow them to be able to have a staff member there more. Yes.
Based on the mandate?
Yes. And I think, and I may, Brad, jump in if you need to. I think an officer, even if it was fully 100% assigned to your department, I think it would have to operate under the sheriff to maintain status as an officer.
Some counties, well, most, like I said, most larger counties, they have the sheriff's office that does that. I know for a fact that Chester, well, they're in the sheriff's department. Their magistrate's office is in the sheriff's department. So they have security right there. Kershaw, the Kershaw County Sheriff's Office does that. Newberry doesn't have security. I couldn't believe that. Lee County, which is a like-sized county, has their sheriff's department provide security. And I forget the other county that I reached out to, but it was a like-sized county and they all provided security. And it was provided by, oh, Lancaster, who provided security through a constable. So that's what made me think about it. Lancaster hires a constable to provide security for them.
Thanks, Judge.
Thank you. Next, we have voter registration. Ms. Stidham, and that starts on page 37. In her department, we did have some increase in temporary as that's where her poll staff is. And I believe some of that would be recovered through election calls.
Right. That's correct. For our poll workers, we are reimbursed by the state at 100% for the June primary. Now, that's 100% for what the state pays because we do pay a little bit more to our poll workers that the county pays. And then for a November election, we are reimbursed at 50% from the state.
And that's for the November election at 50%?
Yes, ma'am. That's all costs. That's including notices, it has to be put in the paper, any rents that are paid, poll worker fees.
And that's already in your budget?
It is. It is.
So you're not asking for anything other than what's in the budget, correct?
That's right.
Okay, so thank you.
Wow, I couldn't.
Sorry you had to wait this long.
Yeah.
The next department is Veterans Affairs. And I believe Ms. Woodard was out of town. But again, she really had no overall increases except what's related to retirement and insurance. After that is the airport. And I'm not sure that Ms. Bryan is here.
She's not here.
Okay.
She didn't ask for any.
Yep. Again, she didn't have anything. Mr. Brad Douglas with Emergency Management is the next department. And I believe he had an overall decrease. Let him take the stage if there's any additional questions.
Good evening. Again, Brad Douglas with Emergency Management. Really none, I don't think there's really any increase. Increased a few things and decreased some other. Not asking for any personnel and no vehicles.
Okay.
Next year.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, after his department is where, it's about midway down page 42, we see the various allocations. They are all set, just kind of for information, at the funding for 2022. I don't, they'll come at another work session. So I won't tie these folks' time up with that. After that, on page 43, is Parks and Recreation. Mr. Vance?
Good evening. Chairman Bell, Counselor. Lucas Vance, Parks and Rec. Well, I don't think it's any secret, the amount of new work, I guess I'll say, that's coming to our department. So a lot of our requests, like other departments, were really centered around personnel. We did have some requests with capital as well. We used Ms. Williams' five-year plan. We had some things like new restrooms. We've kind of moved that down the line, though, I think, to accommodate the cuts with us being over budget. The one, there are a couple of things, though. One, the big one, would be rewiring at Drawley Park. One of our fields does not have lights. So we've been able to get through spring sports now that time has pushed back. So it's been getting later in the year. You know, sun has stayed up later in the evening. So we've been able to practice longer without lights. But as we get into fall sports, we're gonna run into issues where, on a good day, it's gonna be getting dark at 6:30. If it's overcast, it might be dark at 5:30. And that field is one of our biggest, it is our biggest field. And we have a lot of practices on that field. Anytime, you could have four teams down there practicing. Just to give you an example, right now with spring sports, we have one of our biggest turnouts. So we're really happy about that. We had over about 326 kids come out for spring sports. It was a total of 27 teams. We had 12 T-ball teams. And those T-ball teams all practiced down on that field. And that field is Field Three. So it's just, it's been a lot. We've, you know, to put it bluntly, I would say we've done more with less. You know, I've been serving, I've served in an interim role. So we have done a lot of work. I think we're proud of the work that we've done. But I just don't know if we can continue to do it long-term, especially with some of the projects coming in the pipeline. I think if you look back to 2017, some of the facilities that have been added on, that would include Midford, Midford Community Center, the Modestella Community Center, Fortune Springs Pool, the Fitness Center. That's just to name a few. And these all have been additions back to 2017. And we've not had any new staffing, personnel staffing, full-time. Come on. So I think moving forward, that was one of our big requests, was gonna be for personnel. Now, obviously, I know, though, that with us trying to make cuts in the budget, that was one of the first things that were cut.
Mr. Vance? Well, I guess my first question is to Mr. Calder. Have we, have we did anything with the director's job at the Recreation Center? Is it still an interim basis? Or do we have somebody that's full-time director?
I have a point, point at Mr. Lucas Vance, the full-time director. And we've gotten rid of the other position. Go ahead and explain how that was.
So last budget year, of course, that position number for the director was frozen. So this year, that same position number will remain frozen. We'll just take Mr. Vance's current position number and change the title to Director.
Is that an interim? You said that?
I don't know. He's the Parks and Rec Director.
So, so, thank you. So I did accept the offer gladly to be named Director. But I think, you know, when it comes to personnel, it did come at a cost. So in that, now there's not gonna be an athletic coordinator. Okay? So not by title, anyway. The work's still gonna get done. But there will not be a staff member that carries that title.
Well, let me ask you this. Because we need to know going forward. So the new Fairfield County Government Complex that now is going to have a gymnasium in there. And also the new District One Recreation and Community Center. If you had to put a number on those two places to properly staff, if you do Mountain Zion, I'm sorry, if you do the Fairfield County Government Complex, are those people who are currently at the Boykin Center going to that facility? Or we're gonna be able to use both of those facilities for recreational purposes? And what's the amount of staff we looking at to do District One and to do the Fairfield County Government Complex?
So in our personnel request, we asked for a pile. We asked for eight personnel requests. Okay? I'll real quickly go over those. One was the director's position because we had to ask for that back since it was frozen. We've already discussed that, so we know what happened there. As far as the Ridgeway Rec Center that's coming to the pipeline, we asked for two recreation specialists. We budgeted those at $40,000 each. But that, I think, after we add in benefits and things like that, that number's gonna be a little higher. So that's what we had asked for there. We did ask for one more person in health and fitness at the Fitness Center. It's open about 60 to 62 hours a week. And there's one full-time person there. We do have part-time staff that open and close the building. I just, I'm a big believer in the next-man-up system. And I believe that each department should have two full-time. A situation we had, our previous health and fitness specialist resigned. And it took us probably approximately six weeks to get somebody in place. So in addition to doing other duties, we're finding people to cover those positions as well. So that was why we asked for that. That was also 40,000. As far as Boykin, we are moving, our staff is moving over to the new Fairfield County Government Complex. Our two that work in programs now are gonna be housed in the Activity Center. And then the Athletic Specialist Director and Deputy Director will be up in the, there's three offices up above the gymnasium. We had planned, we had asked for a program specialist to stay on full-time at Boykin. So that was another personnel request. And then we had two other personnel requests in regards to maintenance with all the incoming projects and facilities. We had asked for two there. And that was our personnel request. So I guess, long story short, is kind of what we're doing right now is we're piecing it together. We are gonna move our full-time staff to the new government complex once we're given a move-in date. But we're not gonna shut Boykin down. We're still going to have walk-in in the morning, walk-in at lunch. In the evenings, we have exercise classes. We have plans to bring pickleball inside. We've got a very large pickleball crowd, very large pickleball crowd. And they have been very patient. We've done a lot of upgrades to a pickleball court. But there are just some times in humid South Carolina summers when it's raining. So we're gonna get them inside. We just need to get some of the programs that are being held in the evenings and afternoons now to another facility.
Do you know the cost? Mr. Whitaker might know, I'm not sure. The Fitness Center that's behind us here, I understand it didn't get completed. Do you have a cost of what it would take to complete that?
I do not. So there are two, so there are two rooms that weren't finished. So the one in the back was supposed to be, there were supposed to be two showers. We have since, pretty much we use it as a janitorial closet, a lot of cleaning supplies, janitorial stuff. And then there was back in the, I call it the locker, where athletics keeps a lot of its equipment. There is a, there was supposed to be an athletic office there to be on-site at Drawley Park. And that floor was not finished. The walls are up, but there's not a floor.
Can we, can we come up, I mean, can we find out what it would take?
I don't, I don't think that's on our current project list.
It's not.
No, because, because as I understood it, we overspent, way overspent on that, on the Fitness Center. I thought it was completed.
Yeah, that wasn't on our current project. I have heard that concern from Mr. Pauli. But we haven't had any action.
We, I know this is a past project, but we need to understand how much money was spent.
Okay.
Because as I understood it, this project was, I mean, had a lot of money entered by Fairfield Ford and everyone else.
Yeah.
That's right. So we need to truly understand what happened there, if it ain't completed.
Yeah, if we could do that.
So now, I'm just trying to.
Go ahead. You go ahead.
I'm just trying to get a clear understanding as to exactly how many staff people we're asking for. And then. And, and then after that, I need to go back to the possible cost for um the rewiring of the Drawdy Park lights. I think that was the first request.
So the Drawdy Park lights, um, now this would have been quoted through uh West Electric in September. It was thirty-four thousand dollars, I believe. Um, yep, it was thirty-four thousand dollars to rewire. The, so there's, and there's, there was eight personnel requests submitted.
And eight, did you say?
Well, now, I mean, one was the director's position, so we know what happened there. Um, I mean, if it's possible to get that money for an athletic coordinator, I think that's going to be, I mean, that's going to be very beneficial. That athletic coordinator serves as a middle manager um for a very growing athletic program. You know, especially coming off the, the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one where kids were not participating in as many sports, we have seen a boom. Um, especially th- this past winter and into the spring.
So then there's an athletic coordinator, uh, someone in health and fitness?
It was a health and fitness specialist, yes ma'am.
Okay, and what was, and two maintenance persons?
Yeah, two maintenance, two maintenance specialists, yes ma'am, were submitted. Uh, the health and fitness is.
And then who else? I got four, that's.
And then there was, so there was two recreation specialists for the uh Ridgeway Rec Center in District One. And then we did also request the administrative assistant. That would help out, um, kind of to better serve the public's streamlined registration information. Um, we, I can see a, uh, in the future, I can just see rentals uh becoming more of a business um than it has been for us in the past. And I, and throwing, right now, uh, my deputy director's handling a lot of those tasks. But I think it's in, in, in some instances, it does hamper her to really put a hundred percent into what could generate revenue.
I, 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 I guess if I do the calculation, you're talking about four hundred thousand dollars.
I think that, that would be, yeah. Yes, Chairman.
Then uh the other question I have, how do you use high school students and others to assist you in any of the athletic programs or is that possible?
So we, so we use a, 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 a lot of high school students. Um, we've got uh right now, um, just off the top of my head, helping out with after-school. Um, Dontarius Siebels, we've got James Napper, you know, I shouldn't be name dropping, but we, but we, we do use um Matthew Few, um, Zoe, um, we, we do use high school students and then we, we also use those in kind of our uh summertime, uh, summers camp counselors, uh, lifeguards. We use a lot of young, um, I would call them counselors in training, uh, is what I would call them. Um, but, but we do give them time in the evenings, so a lot of times what happens is they'll get out of school, they'll come up, they'll be a counselor for after-school from about two-thirty, three o'clock to about five-thirty. And then um they'll either spend some evenings at the Fitness Center if they're of age. And then, or they may come down to the fields, help supervise practices, the playground, things like that.
Are they given a stipend or how does that work?
Uh, they're paid hourly.
They're paid, paid hourly.
And we, we, we also do some, um, we do um find ways to uh use W O I A. Um, we, we use them with that. We just had Shayla Turner, um, had her last shift Thursday. Um, we, we also use vocational rehab. Um, we've got a couple um students that, that are a couple young adults, uh, mostly college students that, that come out of that program.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find a cost-effective way to kind of give you what you need.
Yeah.
I know that it takes a lot more coordinating to kind of do this, so I'm, I'm, I'm just, I guess brainstorming.
Yeah, no, it's, um, I think we have a lot of parks, we have a lot of facilities. Um, we do. Um, I think you would be, if you were to line all of our parks and facilities up side-by-side with somebody like Richland County, you would be surprised how close it is with the amount. Um, and when you consider that Richland County's three hundred thousand people and we've got twenty-one thousand, we should have a tenth of what they have. But um, and I'm in no, and I'm, you know, I'm all for parks and facilities. I want as many as we can get. We just need um people to supervise and people to manage and people to program them. Um, I think that's, it, you know, if I'm being as honest as I can, I think that's one of the, we've gotten ourselves into some trouble with like Monticello and Midford. Okay, those sites were built. Now, they're small, but I think they're very, um, they're very efficient for, for what we use them for. But we didn't hire any programmers. We didn't hire any full-time people. There's a beautiful office in the building, but there's nobody to sit in it. So, and it's just not been very feasible to have full-time programmers in Windsboro try to program something that's twenty miles away, fifteen miles away. We're, we're just not there, we're not on-site. And at the end of the day, it's going to be, it's going to be your programmers, it's going to be your people that get folks into your facility. And, and we just, we didn't hire people.
I just look for creativity as you, you know, I think um basically um parks and recreation and athletics and um there sometimes is, is a large pool that maybe we haven't necessarily taken a look at. And of course, it all requires vetting in terms of, you know, um, someone going through sled and other, you know, kind of things to make sure that, you know, who we're hiring certainly are um appropriate. But um, yeah, I, I do think that that's an area where we can think about some creative ways of, of staffing too.
So you, I, I guess I just want to be clear. So we're thinking about like volunteers? Because we do.
Volunteer, I'm saying that you have uh basketball, basketball players that may have graduated uh from high school here. Or um, you might have some people who are working some different shifts and others you, who've been involved in athletics before. I'm saying uh try to grow our own pool people. And um, I'm just thinking, like I said before, I'm not offering you a suggestion as to how you do your job. I'm not doing that. I'm just brainstorming and taking a look at some of the kind of creative ways that we might find to meet our needs, to meet your needs, to meet the needs of the young people in our community. And also to kind of grow some of those people who, who might be totally interested in that, in athletics. But, you know, just haven't been asked or haven't been consulted as to whether or not they're available for some use, some.
Well, we, we, I have, we have very strong relationship with, with the public school. Um, they do a lot for us. Um, and we in turn, um, you know, try to make ourselves as available to them. They'll come over, those coaches will do camps for us. Um, we've got uh some coaches that are on our part-time. Um, the head baseball coach is on our part-time staff. Um, so when he's not in baseball season, you know, we still keep that strong connection. Um, I know that two of our full-time employees now, um, our Program Specialists and our Athletic Specialists are, are Fairfield Central grads. Um, you know, they, they played football. Um, they, while they were going to school, they were counselors in training and they graduated, they went to school, now they're back and they're working. Um, so I, I, I agree with you. Um, and I think that I'm just a big believer in that next man up and kind of growing, growing our talent.
Mr., Mr. Vance, last question for you. What's the, what's the participation fee for Fairfield County?
I'll keep my jokes to myself. Um, our fee schedule, we, we, we did submit um some fee changes. Um, but currently, uh, as, when it comes to athletics, uh, it's a twenty-dollar fee. Okay? Um, twenty dollars for tackle football, twenty dollars for flag football, seven-on-seven. Um, twenty dollars for soccer, twenty dollars for basketball, T-ball, baseball, softball are all twenty dollars. Um, gymnastics are five-and-under, program is twenty dollars monthly, gymnastics six-and-up is twenty dollars monthly. Uh, dance five-and-under is thirty dollars monthly, dance six-and-up is thirty-five dollars monthly. After-school, um, it's thirty dollars for the first child and then fifteen dollars for each additional child weekly. Summer camp, forty-five dollars for the first child, then twenty-five dollars for each additional child weekly. Um, group, uh, group fitness classes are twenty dollars a month. Um, soul line, soul line dance is twenty dollars a month, zumba is twenty dollars a month. And those classes typically eat, meet either four to eight times a month. We have uh gym memberships, Lake Monticello and Midford both have fitness rooms and weight rooms, those are ten dollars a month. Um, the Fitness Center, um, the Community Fitness Center is twenty dollars a month. We do offer some combos, like if somebody wants to take an exercise class and be a, a, a member of the Fitness Center, then it would, they would get, they would get a discount, it would be thirty dollars total. Um, we do generate some revenue off, off, off rentals. Um,
Let me, let me ask you this. So baseball, football, basketball, all these sports, there's a twenty-dollar participation fee.
Correct.
Have you did a study of surrounding counties to kind of see where their participation fee is?
Yeah, we have.
Wouldn't you say it's more than twenty dollars?
It's, it's, in some cases, it's upwards of three hundred dollars.
Yeah, sixty-five, seventy dollars, yeah. Wouldn't you agree that twenty dollars really don't even, don't even cover the cost of a uniform? That Fairfield County is burdened with most of the costs. Shouldn't you, don't you agree that we should maybe raise the price to thirty, if not thirty, twenty-five dollars?
We did submit a um fee change for thirty-five dollars for tackle football. So our most expensive um sports that we operate are going to be tackle football and then baseball. Um, so we have submitted fee changes for those to be thirty-five dollars. We also submitted a fee change for softball to be twenty-five. And then we did submit some fee changes for after-school and summer camp care as well.
You, you got those?
Yes.
Okay.
Any more questions? The Vance?
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
All right. Um, I think next up, we've already done transit, so we can skip to page forty-nine and that will be EMS. They had um not, not very many increases that are in here. Um, some of that obviously related to personnel. Medical supplies, which we mentioned earlier, is one that we knew was going to go up. Um, and of course gasoline and diesel fuel for the ambulances.
I'm a visual person. We won't have to read everything in this, but that way you kind of understand when I talk about things. Hello, my name's Dan. I'm Dan Sloan. I'm the Deputy Director with Fairfield County EMS. We have had some slight increases into our budget requests. Those are into the security services. We're starting to have to pay for uh fire and smoke alarm detection in the Jinxville sta- station. That is a new fee that has incurred to us. Our medical supplies have increased um because of COVID and the shortages across the country. So we have asked for a sixteen thousand increase into our medical supplies. Uh, same thing for household and laundry. We've asked for a thousand dollar increase. We're having to clean and sanitize a lot more uh due to COVID and other various uh issues and call volumes. Uh, we've also asked uh for two thousand increase in our clothing supplies. We are actually recruiting very well compared to other EMS services in South Carolina. Uh, we have, when our new employees start here soon, we're going to have five open slots. Uh, so and the cost of uniforms, boots and all that have increased, so we've asked for a two thousand increase, two thousand dollar increase. Uh, if we look at that little packet I gave you, I kind of described how some of our costs are kind of incurring throughout the year. Uh, we've compared our EMS service. We are pretty large when we look at other counties that have a population of twenty-one thousand. We can't look at just population size. We have to look at county size and what's inside the county. Fairfield County is one of the largest counties with a small population in the state of South Carolina. It is six hundred and eighty-six square miles. Uh, we're obligated to respond to every corner of the county within ten minutes of getting a nine-one-one call. And we don't want to delay any more than ten minutes because in a cardiac arrest, for every minute that CPR isn't being performed, our chance of survival decreases by ten percent. So we need to get there as quick as possible and we need to have units stationed throughout the county able to respond. Also, when we look at some of the other similar counties that have population size, we're required for uh doing medical services and rescue on two lakes along with one river. Um, a lot of other similar counties don't have those same issues. We do have water rescue and in fact, just a week and a half ago, we rescued some, two kayakers that were overturned in the water for over an hour. Um, and we just accomplished that rescue a week and a half ago. Uh, we're also required uh for Carolina Adventure World, uh, that actually drums up a lot of business for us and it ties us up for a long period of time. When we go out there, our crews are probably on scene for at least two hours at a minimum, possibly more. We actually go into the woods with an ATV, we secure the wound injured and treat them, uh, extricate them from the woods and then transport them to the hospital. Uh, there is a, a dramatic increase now that COVID's over and more people are trying to get out and about of accidents out there and it's never in the parking lot. It's always on the backside where we actually have to get out there and rescue. Um, also we have uh the concerts and a lot more races going on. That's, it's bringing more uh usage of EMS. Uh, other similar counties, they don't have an interstate. We have twenty-five miles of interstate that we have to um be able to respond to. And as our high-velocity incidents, accidents with severe injuries, uh, also requiring extrication that, you know, fire assists us with, we're actually cutting patients out of the vehicles. And we're also required to uh provide met, first in medical support to nuclear power plant, V C Summers. We have to go through specialized training to respond out there in case they have a nuclear accident, medical emergency in a nuclear environment. Uh, we have to get certi- certified and retrained um every year on that. So last year, uh, as you can see, our call volumes increased. It isn't strictly COVID-related. Um, it has continuously increased over the years. Last year was a record number for Fairfield County EMS. We've never run that many calls. We ran fifty-two, forty-four. And with that, uh, as you can see, I, I think I added a double page on there. The types of EMS calls we are, we have a lot of serious calls. This county has a lot of trauma, which is the purple line on the types of EMS calls. Traffic accidents, uh, it goes in line with trauma, but we responded to last year, five hundred and eleven traffic accidents. The blue line, which is respiratory distress, which kind of goes in co- hand-in-hand with COVID, but also COPD and other respiratory issues uh has dramatically increased to five hundred and seventy-one last year. Um, and you, as you can see, uh, gunshots and stabbings, we had an increase over the last couple of years. It's bumped up a little bit. That actually is a pretty severe stabbing gunshot wounds are going to have a dramatic trauma to the body and require EMS assistance. So next page, we see our supplies cost. So we're obligated by South Carolina Regulation sixty-one-seven that we have to rec- carry specific equipment on our ambulances. It doesn't matter if today that costs one dollar and then tomorrow it costs five hundred dollars. We are still required to buy it. Um, as you can see over the last couple of quarters, if we look at uh the red line, the red line is epinephrine. That is a medication that we use in cardiac arrest to try to get the heart started again. Um, and we utilize it for anaphylactics and also other. Uh, in Q three, four of twenty-twenty, we were looking at a cost of uh eighty dollars and thirty-three cents. Uh, going into Q one, two of twenty-twenty-two, we're now looking at a cost of four hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-seven cents. That's a dramatic increase and this is across the board. Some things have stayed pretty stable, but we have had those dramatic increases. We've all heard about um Narcan, everybody's utilizing, they're handing out, our costs are, are increasing dramatically with that as well. Uh, and that's the list, the blue line listed is naloxone. Uh, we're now paying three hundred and ninety-six dollars for each shipment. So part of our request to capital budgetment, we're requesting um three ambulances. It's going to be a cost of nine hundred and six thousand dollars. Uh, we actually need five ambulances, uh, but we're only requesting three. The three that we're going to replace are Medic One, Medic Four and Medic Eleven. These are international ambulances that were made by tailor-made ambulance. They no longer meet the safety requirements that are put forth for ambulances to be on the road. We are grandfathered in because they're already certified with South Carolina. But if for any reason we lose that certification on them, or if we fail an inspection, we cannot get them recertified. Um, so we would just lose. So we would just lose the trucks because the cost to retrofit them, to be able to make them safe is financially impossible. You have a question?
Yeah. Even if you ordered them today, how long would it take to get them?
Eighteen to twenty-four months. If I bought them today, if we bought them today, it'd be eighteen to twenty-four months before we'd receive delivery. And that cost of nine hundred and six thousand, that fluctuates about every week. It's going to go up, it's going to go down. I can't give you a hundred percent accurate. I say we need five because we're actually, we've kicked this can down the road. Last budget year, we've asked for three, we got zero. We've actually had to purchase two used vehicles in the past because of our situation got so bad prior to being denied ambulances. That is Medic Seven and Medic Thirteen. No ambulance service ever gets rid of their good trucks. So we purchased used trucks. These are maintenance nightmares. In the past three months, these true trucks have been to maintenance eighteen times and it's nothing on maintenance. Maintenance has done a spectacular job, keep getting them back on the road, but it is just another problem followed by another problem followed by another problem. Even when we take them out of service, they are getting overhauled by maintenance. They come back, two weeks later, something else breaks on them. It's just a continuous maintenance nightmare. Where our other situation is, as I said, our ambulances are highly regulated in South Carolina. Anytime any of our ambulances have to require maintenance that takes longer than two weeks, we have to decertify them with DHEC. And then they have to come out and re-inspect them. Well, our Medic Two needs a new transmission. It's unbackordered. We've had to decertify that ambulance. So technically, it's not even serviced with us anymore. So we've, we've lost one of our really good trucks and we have two trucks that are maintenance problems and then we have three trucks that don't even meet safety standards. So that is why we're requesting three. And as I said, if we go onto the, this, this page right here I added in, this is EMS. This is what we bring back to the county. If you look into that third column, all the way down year-to-date totals, we bring back to the county right now, year-to-date, eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars. That's what we've brought back to the county so far. We have collected eighty-three point ninety-five percent of our bills that we've put out. Also with our budget, we've requested the unfreezing of our three paramedic positions. It's roughly...
It was two forty, I believe. That was salaries and benefits for the three positions.
Yep.
Two forty. Two forty.
Two hundred and forty.
South benefit?
With.
With. And this next page right here is where you have a little highlighted spot. At the very bottom, that is a regulation that we have to follow. We are advanced life support service, so we have to respond to ninety-five percent of all of our calls with a paramedic onboard. If we violate that, we can lose our certification with DHEC. If we look at our call volume last night, that's roughly two, or last year, that's roughly only two hundred and sixty-two calls that we couldn't respond with a paramedic. That's not a lot. I mean, that's, that's, anytime we respond, we have, pretty much have to have a paramedic. Below that is the standard for an ambulance. And this, this is what makes it so hard for EMS to have functional ambulances and this is why EMS is our, EMS services are always asking for ambulances. They are highly regulated. Everybody here, I'm sure at some point in time has lost a heater or air conditioning in your vehicle that kind of wasn't working so good. EMS has to take that truck out of service. We are required by regulation to have an ambulance that can either heat or cool to seventy-five degrees. If it's a little bit unfunctional, we have to take it off the road until it's fixed. If we are going down one of these country roads and a tree scratches our emblems on the side truck and we scratch either the star of life, the stripe along the side, or the word ambulance, we have to take that out of service until we can get it fixed. It is even so regulated that if we break one of the sun visors in the cab of the truck, we have to take it out of service. That is how regulated ambulances are. This whole page right here, all these pages, every piece of equipment that has to be functional. We can be pulled over at any time by DHEC. And if we fail an inspection, then we get monetary fines, we can lose our certification, we can lose the truck's certification. And then the last page right here required ambulance, this is a list of every equipment that DHEC requires us to have on the ambulance. And as I said, it could be one dollar today, ten thousand dollars tomorrow, we're still required by DHEC to put it on our truck. So we don't have a lot of wiggle room with our budgets.
One question I have for you.
Yes.
You know, I heard, I heard not too long ago that we had shut down sub-stations across the county. Can, can you tell me?
I can give you a chart right here. I have a chart.
What's the reason for the shutdowns? Is it, is it equipment? Is it paramedics? And what determines what substation you shut down?
So the reasoning is just lack of staff. As I said, we are recruiting good. We are actually getting close to being full. We've had our rough moments. So we've, we've been down eight, nine positions and we just didn't have the crew members to open stations. We determine what stations to shut down based off of call volume. We have a system of reports. We run reports and see which stations have been responding to the most calls. That's, that's the order of which stations are shut down.
Do you have more copies? More copies of that chart?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they, everybody, I think we all...
Of this chart?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So now, when, when you're saying lack of staff, you're down eight to nine positions, those are unfilled positions or?
Yes, yes, ma'am. They were. Here actually going to be about, when our newest employees start, we're going to be about five positions open.
Okay, you still have five positions?
Yes. And that, that's, that's, no EMS service is ever going to be a hundred percent staff. There is always going to be something that draws EMS crews away. The big thing right now is some of the counties have gone through, gone to twenty-four, for twenty-four, seventy-two hour shifts. We were, we operate off of forty-eight ninety-sixes. And some, some people did, some counties went to that and that's drawing people to them. But we have a really good service. We have a good reputation and that's how we're recruiting from Richland and Lexington right now.
And I guess you, I think you've already said it, because, because what I understand is that you, your recruitment is for Fairfield County is probably better than across the state. Is that true?
I won't say the entire state because I couldn't tell you what's going on down. But I do know, I do know that when I speak to other training officers and deputy directors that they're amazed on how good we are recruiting. And that, that it's equipment and training and pay. I mean, it all goes towards our recruitment.
So you're looking for three employees and three ambulance?
Yes, ma'am.
And, I'm sorry, go ahead. And now with the five positions that are open, what's your estimated time for maybe getting those filled?
To get, to get them a hundred percent filled, I, I don't see that anytime soon. The state of South Carolina is actually in a critical shortage of EMS. As I said, we're recruiting good. We're going to have five positions, but I want the ability to fill those five positions if somebody comes. They might, they might, they may go unfilled. I mean, I couldn't promise you one way or another.
Okay. Yeah, that, that's, that's my, my question. If we have five positions open and we add two more, while you may need that, those two, the seven people with recruiting, it sounds as if we will have the positions but not have the people to fill them.
Well, we, we've just hired six or seven new people in the last three, four weeks. So I mean, we're, we're recruiting really good. We, we have a steady stream of people coming in and interviewing with us, but I, I can't say a hundred percent. But as I said, EMS is a, is a interesting career field.
So if you have, so if you have southeastern shut down the whole day, your nearest unit is coming from Greenboro?
It would be Midford or Greenboro. It depends. We, we, we don't necessarily have trucks just at our stations. When we have shortages, we actually move trucks to cover gaps. It's a very complicated system and it'd be hard to explain, but whenever we have openings, we cover those openings as best we can.
I got you.
So that's when you kind of park in the middle of an area?
Yes. But we've also trained firefighters to be emergency medical responders. It's that way. When we can't get there immediately, we say can get there and start medical aid. Our average response time is nine minutes and ten seconds, which is, well, I mean, that's, that's phenomenal in the, in the national standards.
Okay. No other question? I want to thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And I think last but not least is Mr. Pope. If he's still awake back there?
He's awake. Come on, Mr. Pope.
Might give you more of the port.
And that, they start on page fifty-one and his department, they do have a sub-department for each of their sub-stations, which all of them typically are utility oriented. So really where the meat of his budget is going to start on page fifty-four, kind of at the bottom. So I don't think, nothing else really changed. I didn't think so.
Yes, as Ms. Bass mentioned, we didn't make any significant changes to our operational budget. We did have to add an item for a lease of a building. We're going to start leasing the community fire station. Y'all familiar with that one? That's the one here in town. It's one-ten Winter Street. It's owned by Rockton Baptist Church. We had a fifty-year lease on that for a dollar a year. That's since expired. They've agreed they wanted to renegotiate a new lease at three hundred dollars a month for a year. I think last, we agreed and at least by email. Anyway, I haven't seen a contract from them, but to, to, per administration's recommendations, we agreed to lease that space for three hundred dollars a month for a five-year term. So that will be added at some point. We don't really have a lot of choice with that. It's, you, you got to have the building, so.
So we're going to, so we're going to lease that fire station?
Yes, sir. We don't have any other choice. Yeah, and so I'm assuming it's included at some point. We don't, like, again, it's a thirty-six hundred dollars a year. I think somebody's point was you can't lease.
You can't.
Spaces anywhere for, anywhere close to that. I mean, it's a, so it's not a lot of money. It is a new expense to operate the fire station there at that location.
Cost to move would...
Yeah.
I mean, it would be a huge cost to find a new location, so.
Correct. So that's really the only, one of the operational changes that we made to, to that part of the budget. We did have some, some personnel requests and capital requests. Love to go over those with you and briefly if I can. I'll start with personnel requests. We did make two basic requests, one for a full-time fire marshal, which I have actually asked for that for three years now. This will be the third year I've asked for this position to be funded. The, we had a part-time employee that was, that did a tremendous amount of work for us, did a great job for us. He was employed for about two and a half years. However, he decided to go back to retirement and, you know, that was, he's approaching age seventy, so I couldn't blame him. It's left us without. We advertised that position at what we were paying it part-time. We had two applications over the period of since it's been advertised. Neither applicant was qualified or had the time to give to the position we need. It's a full-time job. It is a full-time job considering plan review of all commercial plans that are submitted into the county for fire protection, the fire protection side of it anyway, and building inspections, which we are sadly way unprepared in Fairfield County in terms of fire inspections. Most of our commercial facilities have never had a fire inspection in this county. It's actually pretty disappointing. We don't have the staff to do it. So even a full-time employee, even that forty-hour a week, that one person wouldn't even have time to do what, I mean, that level of work, but it's a start. It's a, it's a way forward. It's a, it's, it's something. It's better than nothing, I guess is my point with the fire marshal position. So that was a request made. I think we had budgeted currently in our part-time, I think we had about twenty thousand dollars in our part-time account. I was willing to, my ask was basically for an additional forty or forty-five for a whole position, you know, to give that twenty up that I had for the part-time position and, and add forty or forty-five to it to, to make a full-time position, to pay him a competitive salary. The other position that I, and I've, I've done this every year too, I've asked for more paid firefighters. You know, we have the best volunteer firefighters in South Carolina, okay? We have the most dedicated group of people. I love each and every one of them. However, there's just not near enough. There's just not near enough. And we're not replacing them adequately. The average age of our volunteer firefighters is about fifty years old. I have one station of volunteers, again, who are among the most dedicated. The average age is seventy-two. The next youngest is, the average age is sixty-two. Again, I am not here, their dedication is admirable and they turn out and they help their community. However, that's seventy-two. That's who's coming to fight the fire. Again, they're great, but they're limited and they'll tell you that. I don't have, I don't have to tell you that, they'll tell you that. So we have to, at some point in the county, have to add more paid firemen. It's not a do or die, but it's a, we have to take those incremental steps in our near future to add those, those folks in. So our call volume is up. We ran a little over twelve hundred calls last year. As Dan mentioned, we do assist in some first responder response to medical calls when they ask, when they're short on help, as he mentioned, they will dispatch and ask for EMRs, our medical first responders, to go and assist. And it's a great program. It helps him, helps EMS because sometimes all they need is a driver and one of our personnel, paid or volunteer, is available to respond at ambulance and so it doesn't, lets him keep more people here in the county. That's a brief, there's a lot more I could say if you have any questions about personnel before I talk about capital.
Mr. Pope, Fairfield County face any kind of liability from not having a fire marshal?
Well, so what the law says is that actually the fire chief, regardless of his training, by any unincorporated areas, automatically the fire marshal. And so the intent is, at which that would be me. The, the goal would be, and I have no training to be a fire marshal, so you don't want me being that guy, okay? So the intent is, so we have one, I guess, is if you hired nobody, if I was the only paid employee, we would be compliant. And it's regardless of my training. Again, that's just the way the law is written. It's antiquated, it's outdated, but that's the way it says.
Well, with the, I know Fairfield County recently instituted a business license fee and I think in order to do that, somebody would have to go around and check the business, correct? Like fire marshal or somebody?
Well, we're required, actually by law, we're required to inspect every public building on an annual basis, which we, we don't even come close to attaining that.
And the four, we have four paid firefighters?
Yes, sir. We have four full-time career firefighters paid.
And they rotate throughout different parts of the county or are they pretty much confined to one area like Blair, Jinxville, Ridgeway, or do they go to different areas?
They are assigned to stations. We make our decisions much like EMS makes their decision based on call volume. So our paid employees are at the five busiest stations. That's where they're located. We have one station that's covered by two part-time employees. We do have three part-time firefighters, I didn't mention that.
And capital request, what do you, what do you need?
Yes. Any more questions about personnel, anybody? Okay. Thank you for asking. So capital budget request, as you know, I don't have to remind you guys, we have not bought any fire trucks in the last three years. Now, our fleet, we have fifty-three pieces of fire apparatus, okay, in some form or fashion. Seventeen of those fifty-three, so over thirty percent are over twenty years old. Ten of those fifty-three are over thirty years old. These are not spare trucks. These are first out, first due trucks, okay? Ten of your fleet are over thirty years old. Now, the National Fire Protection Association, which publishes the guidelines and recommendations for how fire departments operate, their recommendation is that you should have no first due fire truck older than twenty years old. You can keep them to twenty-five, but if they're twenty-five, then they're a spare truck. So we are way out of whack. Um, the plan that I've submitted to administration with this five-year projection has us, we need to buy two fire trucks the next five years, every year. And then even if we do that, that's a lot of money because a tanker that we need right now is three hundred and forty thousand dollars. Okay, uh, lead time on ambulance, as Dan was talking about eighteen months, it's the same with fire trucks. There is no fire truck dealership where I can go down and give them a check and take home a fire truck. If you gave it the money today, it'd be eighteen months or two years before you saw the truck. But we have, so time is of the essence, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. Um, if we, for the next five years, bought two fire trucks every year.
So, so you're talking about two, um, fire trucks, that, so that's three hundred and forty thousand apiece?
Those are tankers. Engines cost a little bit more, uh, in the plan.
Six hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Two tanker, if, yes, sir. For this year, there is two tanker requests in there. Now, there's another request. I'll tell you about it in a minute. I'm gonna trying to treat this, how important tankers are, um, because uh, what I was saying earlier, though, that if we did buy two fire trucks for the next five years, at the end of those five years, our oldest trucks are still twenty-five years old. My point is, we ain't even scratched the surface, okay? That's how bad a shape we're in. Okay, your fleet, the average age of your tanker fleet is a nineteen ninety-nine year model. Okay, who's driving cars that old? Now, my personal cars are, but you see the point. Nineteen ninety-nine is the average year model of our tanker fleet. Our engine fleet is not much better. It's two thousand and five. Um, it's dangerous, people. It's dangerous. We had, uh, the one tanker I'm asking to replace this year is tanker thirteen. Uh, I reviewed its maintenance records, uh, for the last six months. We check these trucks once a week and for fourteen times, that truck would not crank. Fourteen times. Now, that is a first-due fire truck. You call nine-one-one, that is the, one of the first trucks that come in. In fourteen times in the last six months, it would not crank. Now, maintenance has done some work on it. Maintenance, and I, and like Dan said, maintenance does a great job. They do good with trying to piece together our junk because we got some junk, okay? Um, that one particular truck, after it did, they did put a new carburetor on it, it caught fire going to a call. Okay, now that's just embarrassing. I'm just telling you, it's embarrassing. But that's what we have to operate with. That's where we are. And I'm not trying to make a lot, I'm just telling you the truth. I'm not making any of this up. Um, so, and now those are trucks I've been asking to replace for three years and they have not been, have not been replaced. So I've been saying, we gotta replace them and they're not being done. Uh, the other truck that needs to be replaced has a blown transmission. It's the one slotted to go to our brand-new fire station out the river. Uh, uh, so whenever that, if I don't replace that truck, we could have that fire station done tomorrow. I don't have a tanker to go inside of it, therefore it does not count. Every one of my fire stations has to have at least an engine and a tanker in it to count for a fire station, okay? So if one of these trucks that are still in service, I have no spares. If they are ten-seven, out of service, that fire sta-, as soon as I notify ISO that that truck is not there, that fire station loses its rating and everybody within five road miles of that fire station, their insurance just went doubled. The homeowner's insurance. So that's gonna get some attention. And that is in our future. If we do not replace these trucks, that will be the next step. So, uh, it's depressing. I'm the last one. I'm the last man standing here tonight. And I got no good news. I have no good news for you. It's all bad news.
What's our IFO rating right now?
ISO rating is a countywide five. So if you live anywhere in Fairfield County, and if you live within five miles of a fire station, you have a five, which is a really good rating. Outside of five miles, it's a ten.
How good is that? But we, because we got areas gonna have water.
That's correct. If you're outside of five road miles, then you're a ten, which means there is no fire station and it can't get any worse. It's high. It's double. It's double from a five to a ten. What you would pay in your homeowner's insurance. Uh, the other, um, I've, so I've told you the really bad news about tankers. Um, we've mentioned, uh, our aerial ladder. Our aerial ladder is actually the oldest truck in our fleet. It's a nineteen eighty-one year model. Okay, it's over forty years old. It was given to us free. We've had it for about fifteen years. It, for the last two years, we have to have it inspected every year. The last two years, it has just barely passed inspection. I doubt very, it's due, the next inspection will come up in August or September. I doubt very seriously it'll pass. So that means we will have no ladder truck in Fairfield County. Um, I'm proposing, uh, because a new ladder truck costs you a million dollars. Okay, the, we, we don't need a new ladder truck. Um, I'm asking for, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to find a nice used one. They're out there. You can get a nice used one. Um, so, uh, I know there's an air pack issue. I know there's a plan, I think, to fund that through some different money. Uh, y'all know, again, that's not a new issue either. We have to spend a million dollars to replace air packs. Again, I think administration has a a plan, uh, through some other funds, uh, to help address that.
When does that have to be done by?
What?
Time limit?
For?
The air packs?
Now, we are, uh, again, it's a known issue. We, what we did, uh, I think Anne will probably tell you, the first year I was here, we knew we had a problem and we knew it was coming. She's the only one that's still here from four years ago, uh, in finance, right, in Beverly too, but, um, we, we knew it was coming. We, actually what we did is we, um, the city of Columbia replaced all of their air packs about two to three years ago. We approached them and said, hey, can you, we need to buy some time because we don't have the money to buy these air packs now and we need all of ours replaced. And so they gave us all of their serviceable equipment and bought us time, okay? They donated to us. Me and Sheila Pickett, we're still procurement manager. We went down, we met with the fire department. They were gracious. They said, here you go, you can have them to help you out, to buy time. So that bought us some time. Uh, we applied for a federal grant, uh, to replace them last year. We got told no. So basically, after I got the Dear John letter, I sent administration an email saying, we gotta have a plan and we gotta have it now because this is knocking on our door. And to replace our entire, um, inventory of air packs, that's gonna cost about a million dollars. Again, I have.
Can stagger that?
What, we have, we have some options, yes. I don't wanna speak for a vendor, but we have some payment plan options over a three-year period. I think that would make it extremely tolerable. It'd allow us to get all of them at one time, which is huge advantage when it comes to logistics. Um, it's very dangerous to have, uh, a, a brand-new, half of your air packs are brand-new, half of them are old. You have interoperability issues, you have training issues, tons of liability with that. You really just need to do it all at the same time.
Do you have an update on the completion of the Lake Watery Fire Station?
Ms. Williams and I have been working, um, with, um, one of our engineering consultants on that plan and we've had a meeting actually with Ms. Green. Um, we have a, a pretty good timeline. The, the, the plans have been revisited. Uh, they, the, the consultant has not given us the bid package yet because they had to retool that a little bit, uh, but as soon as he does, we're gonna put that out for bid and, and move forward with that project. But again, it, we could do it tomorrow. I don't have a tanker to put in it. So it won't count. It could sit there empty and that's not gonna be good for anybody. Yeah, any, any more bad news I can tell you, Mr. Pope?
No, I, I guess I, I do have a, I have a point. Um, I guess I was surprised by the, um, um, we having to pay the lease for the, um, um, station one, I think it's station one fire department. One of the reasons I'm surprised is I, I remember when Southeastern, um, had the lease, um, no one would do any repairs to that work, to that, to that fire station because it was leased property. Okay, okay, and station one have not been treated that way. You don't have anything to do with it. But it just goes to show you how some areas get treated different than others. And, and, and I'll tell you one thing, I, I am, I'm sitting up here because I'm, I've been a member of Southeastern, um, since its inception. You know, we founded that fire department and, and to hear this news that we've been doing work to it and it was on the lease, that, that is, that is, that is very sad. Because they didn't do anything with Southeast until we bought the property, to the county bought the property. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Anne?
I think that wraps up the departments. Um, Ms. Williams, or did you wanna go through the capital?
I'll tell you what, how y'all, how y'all feel? Y'all got, y'all feel like going through this capital list or you? Um, which, how you feel? Wanna do it later?
Yeah.
So you wanna do it? All right, okay, anyone, um, any, anyone wanna make, wanna make any comments on the budget? Um, when is our next meeting?
Monday.
Tuesday. The next work session.
Next work.
We have a, a regular council meeting Monday and then the work session Tuesday. We invited the agencies to come and give quick presentations about their requests. Um, if you also like, we can try to have, answer some of the questions, um, if you wanna do that. And then we have an additional work session. I believe it's May second, that's scheduled as well.
Okay, um, a- as I, as, um, as I, I read Mr. Whitaker letter on the budget. Okay, one of the things, he said two point nine million dollars over. Okay, if, if I just look at, and I, and I missed some things in the beginning, but, uh, but the request that came in tonight is four point two million dollars. I'm just, just wanna make sure, um, um, we talked, the, the additional request that came in tonight was by four point two million dollars. If I, if I recorded them all correctly.
From staff?
Yes, from, from the department heads tonight. Okay, so with that, um, I just wanna remind us is, um, i- is that we, we apparently one million dollars.
Right.
Um, that's if we accept the ten percent cut. We already one million dollars over the.
The revenues.
O- o- over revenue. Okay, so a- a- as we think about this, um, you know, one of the things, um, and I'm glad you put it in here about the ARP money, that, that, that's a good way to look at that. Because, um, you know, with, with the previous ARP money, you know, um, we thought we had about six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to be able to use for some of this capital. But, you know, um, that didn't go as we, as we thought it would. So again, we got all of this, um, to consider. But, um, i- 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 it is a lot and, um, so a- a- as we look at, uh, a- as these requests, um, we also gotta understand which, which shape the county's in. Um, can we get a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
It's, it's moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Oppose is nay. Not adjourned. Aye. Get some cheese for the. Um, Jason.